Good afternoon. The March 7th, 2023 Board Workshop Session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Mr. Susan.
Here.
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Next policy is Board Policy 5136, Wireless Communication Devices. Are there any discussion items on this Board Agenda item?
You skipped the Superintendent search.
Oh, I don't see them. I didn't see them. The Superintendent?
The search.
Oh, the search. I'm sorry. I thought it said Superintendent search.
FSBA.
And we met the whole time and talked about it. First topic is Superintendent Search Discussion and Direction. Florida School Board Associations will lead the conversation. Come on up, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you very much. We're, John and I are glad to be here today and everything is moving on as scheduled. The first item I'd like to refer to you on is a sheet that we provide in your packet. It's a Superintendent Search Screening Guide. And this is an optional guide that Board members might use as they are looking at candidates as they come in. And it's just pretty much generic and it covers some of the areas that are priorities of this Board. The one, only thing I'd like to remind the Board of is any official notes could be public record. So if you decide to use this guide, then it could be requested as a public document. But many Board members use this to keep track of the candidates as they come in. And we're very pleased to have four right now and I know more are going to be applying soon. So that is the first item I wanted to cover. The second item is, on April 4th, the Board will be having a discussion and determining the semifinalists. And I'd like to kind of give you an overview of that process on what we would use. The first thing that we'd like to do is, the Board will have some time to look at all of them and we'll provide an overhead with a list of all of the candidates. And we'll start out with a discussion of the candidates. And then we will go through candidate by candidate and ask Board members which of the candidates they would like to continue in the process. And we call it continuing in the process at this particular time. If three Board members would like to have a person continue in the process, then we would move those people forward. For example, if there might be two Board members that would like a candidate to move, continue in the process, then we would have further discussion on those two to see if a Board member that would want him to advocate for that person and another Board member would like to bring the person in, continuing the process, then we'll add that person also. And we'll keep going through that process until we determine who we would want to continue in the process. And at that point, we would have our semifinalist list. We don't do any ranking at all. We just have a conversation and go through that process. And it works really well because many Board members, some Board members might see something with a candidate the other Board members might not pick up. At that point, when we declare our semifinalist, we start the background checking process with our law firm, Green Spoon Martyr, that we work with out of Orlando. And then we also, and Board members could be thinking about this right now, we then, if there's an important question that Board members would like to ask, you could tell us what those questions are. And you don't have to, what we'll do is we'll ask you to just email them to us or we'll call you and get those questions. And then we'll ask the semifinalist to respond to three of them in video format, less than five minutes. And then we'll ask the other two in written format. And so then what, and all of these responses from the semifinalists then are available on the portal, website portal. So everyone in the community can get to know the candidates. Board members get a chance to see the candidates in a video format. And then important questions that Board members might have, they can get some initial answers from that. And then, so when the time comes to select the finalist, the Board members have the background check information. They've had reference checking and they've been able to at least have some identification with those candidates. So any questions?
Yeah, I have one. So you want each Board member to identify one specific question that we want answered, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't need that right now, but we would, there'll be a lot more to do it. But we'd like to have, then there'd be five questions that would be sent out to each, the same questions for every one of the people that's identified as a semifinalist.
Perfect. Thank you.
So you can kind of think about that question now.
Okay.
And if you can, just for the posterity of like duplicative efforts, if she says the same thing as me in my question, right, then we're going to have to change it around.
What happens is, we'll get those questions and then we'll work individually with the Board member. So we won't have the same questions.
So you'll call and say, hey, that's already being covered. Here's where to ask.
Right. We'll do that.
And then, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We'll work, that's a very good question. But we'll work individually with the Board members to determine that question. But I always like to have Board members think about it, you know, well in advance. So you can think of what you'd like to go ahead and ask.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's kind of the semifinalist process. And then at that point, we're moving forward. And I'm going to turn things over to John now to talk a little bit about what happens, what we're recommending when we get to the finalist process and interviews. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vogel, and good afternoon, Board members. In your packet, you should have three sample interview schedules for the onsite interviews. Once you select your finalist, which you would do on, excuse me, April the 18th, there's a sample. And should the Board select three finalists, there's a one-page sample interview scheduled there. If you select four finalists, there's a sample of that. And if you select five finalists, there's a sample for that as well. I will start off by saying that this is certainly just the initial stages of FSBA trying to get input from the Board about your thoughts on how the one- or two-day onsite interview process would occur. If you looked at the little sample that if you have three finalists, we would be able to do that in one day where you can complete your interview of the three finalists as a sitting body. And the afternoon, you could do your one-on-one interviews for an hour with each finalist that afternoon. So if we have three finalists, should the Board select three, we could complete that in one day. With four or five finalists, we would need the two days which you've set aside for onsite interviews to be April the 27th and 28th. So we would need two full, two days for four or five finalists. If I could, ask you to please turn with me to the sample with four finalists. And I just want to kind of review some high points of some options the Board may have if you have three, four, or five finalists. So on the first date, over to the left column for the sample with four finalists on two days, that's the date of arrival for any out-of-district or out-of-area finalist. If you look at the bottom of that left, far-left column, dinner with a host, that is an option should you decide to do that. If you want to identify a district host or maybe two district hosts, two district staff members for each finalist to kind of be their onsite host for these two days, the option is you could have the host have dinner with the finalist. We found out over the years with travel and things of that nature that dinner is an option. It is certainly not a requirement for the host to have dinner. And sometimes the finalists do like just, especially the year out-of-area finalists, like they get in town and get settled in. And even any local or candidates that are in close, central Florida would like to have that evening to kind of prepare. But having a host or two hosts have dinner with each finalist. So if you have four finalists, you would need eight hosts. That is an option. If we look at the second, April the 27th, which would be a Thursday, that is the day that you would have your interviews for an hour and a half with each of the four finalists. The concept for that day is simply that the finalists would meet here in the morning. The option is they can have breakfast with their hosts prior to the arrival time. Or you could have a light continental breakfast here at this facility because your interviews will be occurring here. And let's say we have the four finalists. We would identify the finalist as finalist A, B, C, and D. As the Board is interviewing, as you can see, assuming you want these times and all these times are flexible. If you begin interviewing finalist A at 8:30, then you would finish finalist A at 10:00. And while the Board is interviewing finalist A, then finalist B, C, and D would be potentially on tours with the two hosts. You could have a meeting set up with department staff here that each of the finalists could go around and visit with for 30, 45 minutes while another finalist is being interviewed. So you have the option of kind of closed community tours. I know we can't go too far because, you know, you don't have all day to do this because they'll have to come back for their interviews. Or you could do something onsite here where maybe they do take an hour tour of one of your closest schools and come back here and maybe meet for 45 minutes with various departments and kind of rotate through that. So we'd just like to have some activities for those three remaining finalists who are not being interviewed to have some time with staff and/or touring around. Lunch could be onsite here for the Board as you kind of go through the day with your interviews. If you do decide to do tours outside of the person who's being interviewed, the tour host could maybe stop and have lunch with a candidate if they're out touring. So that is, that's an option as well. That evening, what we would have the Board consider, if you wish, is to maybe have a community meet and greet. This facility could be, this room could be a good room for that or another venue that you might want to identify. But the concept for that evening, as we've spoken about before, is we would have the four finalists here. We would kind of sequester the finalists in the back somewhere. And each finalist comes out and gives an eight-to-10-minute intro of him or herself. And then the next finalist comes up. We rotate through the finalists. And after that, then this room would kind of be open for, you know, four finalists to be in four corners of the room. And then the community who comes to that meet and greet and mingle around and speak with the finalists to get some first impressions of those finalists. What we would also do that evening is have a QR code available where the members of the public could, on their phone, access that code and submit any thoughts that they may have about the candidates to you, the Board members. We would compile that and have it ready for you the first thing the next morning before you start your one-on-one interviews. So some of those comments might be, the person in the community might want to make some very positive comments about the strengths of a candidate or two. Or someone may have questions about a candidate or two. But that is another way for the public to be involved in providing some feedback to the Board during that meet and greet. And depending on the time of that meet and greet, we can have a light dinner for the finalists, you know, kind of a, maybe a box lunch type thing or something prior to or after the community meet and greet, depending on the time that we finalize. The very next day, which would be Friday, the April 28th, that would be your day for your one-on-one interview for an hour with each finalist. If you look at that sample chart, you'll kind of see how that lays out. That morning, again, it could be breakfast with a host and/or a light continental breakfast here where we would have all the finalists here. Those activities would all be in this facility on that last day. So as four Board members are interviewing the four finalists for an hour, one-on-one each, then you would have one Board member that would have a blank period of time because you only have four finalists. So if you looked at the far-right box there, which would be that Friday, April the 28th, you'll kind of get a feel for how the times would lay out for the Board members to interview four finalists for an hour each. If by chance the Board selected five finalists, then you would have five interviews, an hour and hour back-to-back. And we'll give about a 15-minute break in between those. So that's kind of a quick overview of what our thoughts are for those two days of onsite interviews. And we would certainly like to begin to get your input on, you know, on the first day, do you want to consider the community reception? Would you like to have, you know, lunches kind of onsite except for those people who might be out touring? Would you want to have the tour concept with staff people? You could have one staff member and one business community leader as a host together. Your staff person would kind of know the district, would kind of be the driver. And your community person could be there to also discuss Brevard County with those candidates. That will also be a time that the candidates are kind of interviewing Brevard as well, asking questions about some of the facilities, some of the buildings, some of the challenges in instruction or some of the positive things that are going on. So it really is a good time for them to share some information. So now keep in mind that we will be back on the April 4th and I'll bring this up again. I'll have a more refined schedule for you then, based on your input today. So if I could, at this point, get any thoughts that the Board might have on some of the functions surrounding these two days?
Thank you. I think if you would walk through, the first one you said you were interested in us giving you feedback on was the community reception. If we can just go through each one of those like that. So I think if you guys are interested in a community reception, the way that he laid out, we can discuss that now.
Well, my only thought on the community reception is that if that's not the selected candidate and now we have presented them to the community, could that have a negative recourse for us? If the community falls in love with him and he's not who we select?
Yeah, I think in the past, so I've been a part of Bingley when he was here years ago. And so they had a community where they both were in the same room. People came and meet and greet and it went pretty well.
So all of the candidates would be in the room for the community reception? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And you can do different locations, but it's a way for them to kind of meet. And I think it's open for the community to actually get to them. Like, we're always going to have people that have their opinions.
Right.
But I think that it allows people in the community to go. But I'm guessing.
I'm wondering if the way, and you guys, this is, you know, you're the experts in this. I'm wondering if the way that you do the QR code and input you is, so it's not so much a vote. We're not necessarily taking a community vote, right? You're asking for feedback that will come to us anonymously. But we're not asking, we're not going to do a poll of everybody who comes.
No, ma'am, not at all. It's simply an opportunity for the community to kind of express their thoughts about, again, the strengths of a candidate or, you know, any concerns. You know, potentially someone might say, does this candidate have enough experience in, you know, finance management? Or it's just thoughts, it's thoughts from the community. It is no ranking. It is no voting. It is simply another chance for them to give input to the Board on their thoughts about certain candidates. And we have had it with, you know, kind of an open setting like this. We've also had it where they would kind of have rooms assigned. Depends on the facility and the community kind of goes from room to room. But we just kind of make that decision based on the facility and what might work best here in Brevard. But we found that it's been very well received by the community.
Does each candidate get the opportunity to like get up and speak? Or how does that, what does it look like?
Well, to start off the program, we'll basically just have each finalist come up and give a quick six-to-eight-minute intro of him or herself. So if we have it at this facility, you may have, you know, 70 or so people sitting here. Each finalist comes up to the microphone, give six or eight minutes. We then take that finalist out the door. Another finalist comes in. They have six to eight minutes. We rotate through with the four finalists. Some districts, we've had questions for each finalist. After they do the six, five-to-eight-minute intro, six-to-eight-minute, then they respond to one question. We'll kind of emcee that just to kind of get the community, give them experience with how they may respond to questions kind of off the cuff.
Okay. No, I like it.
Anybody else? Good? Good, Ms. Jenkins? And what you can also do is, is you can also just get them into different rooms. You can give everybody a number and then they can rotate in a number fashion. You know what I mean? There's all kinds of ways.
Right, right.
Because what will happen is the first guy that speaks will then go and then the entire place will go follow him. And then it'd be like, you know what I mean? And then it just gets kind of crazy. But I really appreciate you making that offer. What's the next one that you need direction on?
Basically, you want to entertain the idea of having hosts.
I do.
I think that's great. And I was actually, while you were talking about having two hosts, maybe a staff member and a community member, I wonder if we could pull the community members from our chambers. We have four chambers plus, you know, we've got the Space Coast, whatever it's called, from the EDC. I think that would be great because you're talking about trying to sell Brevard. That's their job and they may be trying to sell certain parts of Brevard. But I think that might be a great source for us to pull those community people to team up with a staff member.
Right. And Ms. Campbell, it does help really kind of keep that community bond with the district. So you would have maybe one district office, maybe executive level cabinet member who's familiar with the district and drive around to the places that we can get to in time. And we can kind of work with your folks here to determine what would be an appropriate route. Can they visit this school real quick, drive by the government buildings or whatever would allow them in that hour and a half, depending on their schedule? And if we had a community person with that, that would be a great mix.
Yeah. No, I like that. And I like the idea of having the community has with me. I would just offer that, that calling on our chambers, if the CEOs of the, or the directors of the chambers would be the people. But, you know, I know they're very busy people. If they could kind of designate someone for us, depending on how many we need, three, four, or five, I think that would be a great idea.
Jenkins?
Yeah, I think it's great. Thank you.
And I think, I think my suggestion would be, even if you had more than two and you just had three moving around, because you have like the zoo, you have Linda Weatherman, you have the chamber presidents, you have career sores. you have the chamber presidents, you have career sores, you have, like, Vieira Company, some very active people. And we had spoken before about having them do videos to push out, and we had spoken just a minute ago that in the event, we had kind of said that would be okay to have, like, Linda Weatherman and some of the others make a video of promoting who we are, and tell a little bit about it, put it on our website, and when they come in, they'll meet them, and then those people can do it. So I think it's a really good, and I wouldn't hold it to just two, just in case there's some really good people. Maybe three would be tops, because four people can fit in a car.
Yeah.
And John, do you want us to identify these individuals by April 4th when you come back, or what's...
That would be great if we could. And what I'll do, I will take and refine this schedule with a little more specificity in it.
Okay.
With regard to times and things of that nature. Build in the community reception, build some, some window times for tours, depending on what candidate A, B, C, or D, or that schedule might be. I'll do that for, again, schedule three, four, and five, in case we have three finalists, four, or five. So if you could, maybe at the next meeting, which is, again, April the 4th, the next time we meet.
Okay.
If we could have some names of the community people, and even the staff people that we would need. So anywhere from three staff people to five staff people, and community people, that would be okay for three, four, or five finalists. And like the chair says, we can have more than, you know, one business person in, in the vehicle.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Dr. Schiller, since this, that, this kind of community partner issue falls direct...
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Since this community relations, kind of partnership issue falls under the area of GCR, could we ask Mr. Brune to help identify, since we already have the date?
Yes, of course. Mr. Brune and his staff all have responsibility in this area to work that through, should you so desire.
Okay.
Okay.
To get those community partners for us.
Okay.
All right. And any suggested people that we have to, you know what I mean? Think that would be appropriate. Everybody okay? What's the next one you need?
Those are, like I said, this was just our initial, a little feedback from the board. So again, I'll take this now, move back, come up with three more refined schedules, three, four, or five, and maybe refine some more details at our next meeting. But this certainly is a great help for me to get started on the schedules and working with your staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
On the three-day, before you walk off, I did have some concern with the three-finalist schedule. That's a long day. I know it's possible if we start at 7:30 in the morning, and we're ending, I just, I wonder if it might be better if we have three finalists to transition that to, follow the four-finalist pattern. I mean, even if there's a little bit more sitting around, I just hate to kill somebody, you know, and all the staff who have to get them everywhere by trying to cram it all into one day, when we already have the days blocked off.
Yes, we do. And that's always a good thing with two days blocked off. The finalists will know, they have to commit to two days. So I'll do away with this one day and look for one for two.
Okay.
Yes.
I would, I would, I would hesitate to not do it in one day because of calendars and commitments and stuff like that. But if there are individuals that, you know what I mean, we might have three people that are running other school districts that would love the opportunity to come, get interviewed, and go out. I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying about the three, but I'm looking at it, and if we can get it all done in one day, then why is it we would move to two?
Just to remind you, the ad actually says they have to be available for onsite interviews on the 27th and the 28th of April. So they would be prepared. And we won't know if we're going to have three finalists, or four, or five, until April the...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Yes.
So I, it's not a lot of time to adjust the calendar at that point.
I mean, I'm okay. It doesn't matter to me. It's just getting it done in one day as opposed to two. It's six or one-half dozen. If you look at it, one day starts us at 7:30, finishes at, like, 8 o'clock. You know what I mean? So if you...
Wow, dinner starts...
Not for them, yeah.
Right.
So I'm going to, for the sake of brevity and time for this workshop, I'm going to ask that we don't respond to each other every single time someone makes a comment. I'm with Ms. Campbell on this. I think it, it needs to be more than the one day. If we don't remember the last process that we went through, it was, it was way too quick, it was way too long. And quite frankly, after you do those group interviews, you need time to kind of process what was discussed and presented in order for you to generate more questions, or even kind of go home and do a little bit more research on your own. So I prefer the other ones.
Okay. So I guess that's a majority of people. We're good to go to those two days.
Okay.
I would...
Two days.
All right?
Yes, sir.
What else do you need?
That's it for me. Thank you.
You want us to start sending you our questions now, or?
My equal contact individually.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, next topic is Board Policy 5136, Wireless Communications Devices. I think you guys have all had a chance to review them. It's pretty much the same thing that we've had before. Are there any questions on it? No? Same one. We agreed to. It's just coming back for us. Oh, good. I don't even know if you have to get up. I think we're all good.
Mr. Brune, would you just outline for the public the next steps that we would follow with this policy with regard to moving forward?
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Who are you speaking to?
Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Gibbs, the parliamentarian, he can do it.
Yeah, the next step would be public hearing number one at the next board meeting, followed by public hearing number two the following board meeting. And that would be the one that the final approval comes in.
And those two have to be seven days apart? Is that how it works?
First public hearing, you have to have a, at minimum, 14 days' public notice from the run date of the ad. And then the second public hearing has to occur no less than 28 days from the running of the ad.
28 days from the original ad?
From, you know, whenever your ad noticing it was. So, yeah, we do it all in one. So it would be 14 days to the first, and then 28 days to the second.
So conceptually, you can pass it within 28 days, as long as you notice it inside of there, and we're good to go.
And Brevard Public Schools procedure has an extra workshop built in, so that, like this one, where if you did say, we want to make changes, you're still outside of rulemaking, and you can make those changes. At the first public hearing, you make a change, we got to start over.
Yep. We should be good. Anybody have any questions on a topic? Be okay? Right? All good? Okay. Moving on. Next topic is Board Policy 2521, Structural Materials Program. Does anybody wish to start the discussion? Mr. Trent?
Yes. So I just want to start by saying thanks for your patience on this, but we want to get it right. And I'd handed out some notes that I want to make sure if we have the support of the board to include some of these, and, and some of the rationales to why. So, it seems like they're, I'll let you guys get ready, or have it all set. I'd sent in an email, pretty much, so I don't, I don't have to start from the beginning, but I will here. Books in the formal review process are to be listed online, along with some books that have finished the process. Some might refer to this, and I'm not, but to a do-not-buy list. But it's actually just a list of books that have been, you know, informally removed or formally removed. But for new teachers coming in, it would be nice to see what, what, the A-list, especially when we're dealing with classroom libraries. You know, it would be good to have. But essentially, it would look like, and that's the example, whatever book, you know, that's pending a book committee review. Another title, that one was deselected by the book committee due to violation, and it would be specific. But it would have reason, a title and the reason why it's, it's at, where it's at in the process. But that would be, if we can have something that refers to that, I think that would help all of us moving forward. And we can handle these one at a time, so I'm sure you can have some questions, or if there's any, any questions on it up here.
Dr. Sullivan, would you wish to respond?
Actually, I already met prior to this discussion to add the informal list on the website. However, with informal requests, we don't always get reasons. But if we do receive a reason, we can certainly add that if that works for the board.
Any objection to showing the reason?
I'm sorry, back up. So I, this particular thing is asking us to put a list online of the books that are in the process and that are, have completed the process. I'm not sure where the, I must have missed something you said about reasons.
That was brought up. The reason would be seen next to it. So it's not just titles, because we want to see where it's at in the process. If it's just, if it was removed during the informal process, it's good to know, because it's, that those, I don't want to say those books could be hidden, but there could be book, teachers at schools that don't know why a book was removed from another school. So it's, to keep a track of a larger list of books that they could refer to. If that was a new teacher coming in, or a media specialist, it would be nice to have, because there is no record of that. Right now, if a media specialist takes a book out of their library, it's like a tree falling in a forest and nobody heard it, if you're on the other side of the county. So it's just a way of keeping track of that. And if there is, and that's what Dr. Sullivan was saying, if sometimes there's not a reason given, just the librarian says, yep, it's off. But if there is a reason that would be...
Gotcha. Like the media specialist's reason. Sorry.
Yes.
I just got to get my brain wrapped around it.
Okay.
I, is there, would this be duplicating something for the, in the state processes? Because it seems like there is, there's a new, the DOE, new requirement for districts to report, for them to keep just a list of books that have been removed. Do they have to have gone through a formal process? What is, what is the state requirement from the DOE?
So that's a good question. Yes, we've had to submit those that went through the formal process and what the outcomes of those are. What we've done on our website, again, just for the sake of transparency and clarity for all, we've listed that information. Separate from this discussion, we found that it would be helpful to our community to also put those that have already been through informal review to what he's saying, because honestly, I'd rather have it there than lots and lots of requests. Like, we would rather just be transparent and public and there. So there, we do anticipate a separate process to continue some more submitting to the state, but I don't think it's duplicative. I think it's really easy to have the information on our local website, current and accurate, for our families, if they want to review that. And I, I'm inferring that's what Mr. Trent's referring to.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Any objections to Mr. Trent's request? I think we're good.
I have something to say.
Yes, Ms. Jenkins?
I'm just, I'm a little, I'm a little confused. I feel like part of this request is contradictory to something that was discussed by the majority of the board previously, in which there was a conversation to remove the opinion of media specialists from the book review committee. And so now we're saying we want to publish books that were voluntarily removed by media specialists onto a website. And I feel like we're saying, we trust them when they want to remove books, but we don't trust them when we want to keep them. And so I don't understand this contradiction. I don't see the, the purpose of that, or the value of it. Really, what it is, is it's autonomy for that media specialist, which is what I always fight for. I don't see the need of putting a list together of voluntary polls for media specialists. If they were concerned so deeply, I'm sure they would bring it to their advisors and people above them as well.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins? Any other further comment on it?
Just as a reminder, the involuntary process also involves the principals, so it's not necessarily just the opinion of the, of the media specialist.
Good to go.
Right, absolutely. But we removed everyone except board designees from the book review committee, is my point.
All right. Thank you. Next topic?
So the...
Yes, we have consensus of board members. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'll do that for you every time. Go ahead.
Next, it's, it's actually in order. That informal process that we were talking about, I don't believe we've actually talked about a timeframe. And I, I believe one calendar week would be a good timeframe, because it could just sit there.
Let's ask, how much time do you think is, is better?
One calendar week would be extraordinarily difficult. Oftentimes, they come in with multiple titles, and the time to turn it around for our office, to the principals and media specialists to actually read the feedback and look at the titles, it would be very, very difficult to turn it around in a week. I would suggest 30 days, and knowing that we would more than likely be sooner than that. But sometimes the lists are rather lengthy, and we're asking them in the middle of a full date to pull it. It's important, and we want them to pull it and look at it. So I certainly think adding a timeline would be appropriate, but one week would be extraordinarily difficult.
Okay. And I do appreciate their time, now that they're, many of them are alone in the media centers by themselves. The issue was not having one versus having one, and I think you can agree with that. I'm okay with 30 days. What do you guys...
I'm not caring for a timeline. I think a timeline's good, so 30 days.
Any other comments? I think the question on the 30 days is, is that in the event that we have a lot of them, the issue is, is to expand with the multiple committees so that we could then respond to multiples. Does that make sense to you?
In, in that initial informal process, I am first working with our media, our media specialists at the district level to check the locations. That typically takes a couple of days.
Okay.
And then I'm emailing the principals to collaborate with their media specialists and make a determination if, based on the feedback in an informal review, do they want to make any changes to that book in their collection.
Sure.
It isn't until a formal is requested that those other things begin.
Right. And I, and I just wanted to say that I think that if, in the event that we get more of them, that we have the plan in place to expand if we do. We, I don't think we've had that opportunity yet, but if we do, we'd be there. That's all. All right. Sorry.
Before you go on to the next one, we, there was, you kind of had two requests in that first paragraph, and I, we gave consensus on the first two lines, but I don't know that we talked really about the second two lines. You said books, it says, "Books on this list that were either voluntarily removed or removed after formal review will need permission from the school board and school principal before they can be brought back in the library or classroom." We didn't, you, we didn't necessarily discuss that.
Good point.
Are you still making that request?
Yes, I think we, yeah, it was mentioned not until the back part. But yes, yeah, that is well. I mean, if it's out, we certainly don't want to, anyone other than the school board, or that committee, which is really the school board, to be asked to put that back in. For example, if there's a, a book that's on this list that really was inappropriate at an elementary school, or a junior high, but a high school now sees that and says, no, we want it, can we bring it in? You know, we would, we could easily approve that. So I, I believe we need to be the ones approving books to be put back into circulation.
Can I ask a point, clarification point? You had mentioned the school board or our committee. Are you saying that you would like these to, the finalization of movement would come back to the school board, or you would like it to be the school board committee that we have made up of our members?
No, I think, what's written is, it's a school board, it says, "and" school principal, but we could always just have the insight from that principal. But I do believe that we're the ones responsible for it, so it should, it should start and stop here reinstating the books.
So in the event that the committee makes a decision, one way or the other, the book still comes back to us for final approval? Or if they go against what...
So what, I think what Ms. Campbell was talking about, and myself, here's, if books are off, they're on that list. If somebody's petitioning, you know, to put them back in the schools, then that...
After eight years. It's, there's a...
Yeah, there's a...
There's a eight years, the district material review committee's determination is valid for eight years. So I think you're asking, what happens after eight years? If, does it mean that, and I had asked when we went through this process originally, can we have that list to stay? It needs to be marked somehow, so people know, hey, if you're about to bring this, this one went through a challenge process, however many years ago. But you're asking for it to become, to come back, if it's on that eight-year determination, that it, you know, that it does come through whatever process.
Goes through board approval.
I, I wouldn't say, I, the principal is important, because I'm, I'm just going to throw it out, that we think about the school board how it is right now. But the principals are responsible in this policy and through state law for what is in their collection.
Right.
So if, even if the school board were to say, okay, you can have this book back in, the principal still needs to have the authority to say, mm, not my school, because I know my community. So I think that, I think that level needs to stay in for our individual schools.
Just point of clarification, I'm sorry. Just want to make sure we get it right. We're talking about after a formal review now. I, I got, I thought, I just want to make sure we're not talking informal.
No, it was the formal.
At the end of the formal, at the end of the eight years.
Yes.
If an additional decision were to be made. Perfect, got it.
Oh, wait. Okay, well, then we need to clarify, because the way you have it written, it's either voluntarily removed, which would be an informal, or removed after formal review. So what are we asking for? Because a voluntarily, a voluntary removal would mean that if someone came back in, and that there was not a time limit on it, I don't think. If a principal and a media specialist pull a book, and then that ends the process, if they're all gone... they're all gone, there's-
Unless they go through formal review.
Correct. So I mean, that, that is an area that you'd even question of the need for an informal, but, uh, to leave it in there for, for, for the, you know, for obvious reasons. Uh, the fear is, or its potential, that it's removed informally, so does it still fall under the, the eight years? If it doesn't, that's where the issue could come in. It, it, it gets pulled, two months later, it shows up in another library, it wasn't formally pulled, it wasn't on a list formally. Um, I, I, I'm strong on the fact that any book that appears on this list, formal or informal, it, in order for it to go back into a school, it, it needs board approval. How do we, how do we make that happen?
He's right. So when you think about the book that was pulled out of the schools, uh, it, it didn't go through the formal review process, that, that had the pictures in it that were very descriptive. That never went through the formal book review process. So in essence, if that book doesn't go through the formal review process, can it just go back in now because we haven't formally said, this book is not allowed to be on this, on the shelf? So that is a question that needs to be clarified. I think we need to make sure the policy is very clear on that.
Yep. So with your expertise, that, that's our dilemma of having an informal and a formal. I even questioned, I talked to, uh, Mr. Gibbs earlier, about the eight years. You know, we don't put a, a time limit on our discipline policies. I mean, if it's deemed not appropriate for a, a school, it stays inappropriate to that school and all our schools until it comes back through our board. So however, we can make that happen.
The, the only caution is that with our informals, it's not always school by school. And so there's a potential for a title that is at five schools and then four choose to pull it. That's when we give that information to the petitioner to decide if they want to put it in the formal process. Um, so it, it's okay with me. I just want to point out that you might only have two voluntarily and one voluntarily pull it.
And it might be a situation where, you know, it was at some middle schools and a high school, and the middle schools all pulled it, and the only one that's left is the high school. So the petitioner may say, you know, I, I, the main thing for me is that it's all documented, that it's, every book is labeled, so that even the book that was pulled last school year, um, in, in the involuntary process, because the principals all said, no, this isn't long in schools, we agree, then it's labeled so that new media specialist, new principal can go in and say, you know what, this, proceed with caution. I, I am, I absolutely value the informal process because many of these times, our principals and our media specialists, you know, and like I've said many times before, we, we don't need to assume that they knew it was in there. Sometimes they didn't know it was in there, and they're able to take care of it right off the bat, and we don't have to go through a process and have, make people read hundreds of pages of a book that's highly inappropriate sometimes. You know, we, we don't have to go through all that because they're taking care of it in the responsible way that they take care of things. And so the informal process is very valuable, and I would hate to, um, I, I don't want it to remove it. And, and of course, if, if it is in, removed in an informal way, and somewhere down the road, someone proceeds without looking, you know, or they ignore the note or whatever that's put in there, and, and someone brings it back, and it, it can go through the challenge process again. But honestly, where we are today, I just, I'm not going to say it's impossible, but it's highly unlikely.
If I can propose a, a suggestion, uh, many of you have seen the list that I've used to track the books, where they're at, crosses off, and those kinds of things. We can just post that online. I mean, if, I'm, I'm tracking it anyway, and we can keep that updated so that every person can see the circumstance. Um, I, I'd just as soon be super duper transparent and keep that list posted online as well if that works.
Yeah.
That solves the issue.
Good. All right. You okay with it?
Yep.
Ms. Jenkins, did you want to say anything?
No, Mr. Susan.
Okay. All right. Ready to move on to the next one?
Yep.
All right.
So the next one, challenges, here, let me get this. Challenges should be allowed to be anonymous. Now, this is a question mark because I'm going to need some, I'm going to need some help on this one. But, um, the best that we possibly can, and for obvious reasons of backlash and just flat out attacking, you know, our, our constituents out there for just asking for the library, the media specialist in the school to look at, uh, the contents of a book. We can give you examples of that. But if a, a petitioner decides to submit anonymously, they'll need to submit some type of paperwork to provide public schools administration in the form of the, uh, formal review paperwork, uh, and, and maybe show some type of ID that they are, you know, somebody, you know, in, in our county. Uh, but their name and address will not be recorded or made available for public requests. Um, so, Mr. Gibbs, how can we make this happen?
Just pointing that way.
Yep.
And just so you guys know, the reason that we pulled it from before was because many people from both sides were being attacked with threats from social media, and I was fearful that our staff would start to get that too. And that's why we originally pulled it back. And then I asked Mr. Gibbs in that moment, I said, we're going to need to move on, possibly trying to keep someone anonymous there. And he had said that it was very difficult. Go ahead, Mr. Gibbs.
No, I think you're talking about something different. He's wanting book challenges-
No, I know.
-someone filing a challenge to be anonymous. Um, I don't know that there's as big of an issue with filing the paperwork. The problem I foresee is normally the challenger is able to be a part of the process as outlined. They get to come to the meeting, they get to address the committee on why something is inappropriate and have their say in that process. If they're anonymous and they don't want to participate, then that is not going to be available to the committee. It's just going to be, uh, straight up, here's what they filed, and now it's going to be reviewed. If we don't have a record of it, there's no public record. So if we aren't taking any information, we get public records requests that are anonymous and the law allows that. So I think the policy can allow for an anonymous challenge. It's just going to be a matter of making sure it's on. If they email it, it's not anonymous anymore, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Is there a way that you can take a look at it and make a suggestion to make it-
I think you can just say, you know, the district will accept anonymous challenges and just caution that you have to, if you email it, it's no longer anonymous and that's a public record. And so-
Yeah.
-any email to the district, that's why we have those warnings on the bottom.
To that particular email address.
It's a public record, yeah. So if you anon, if you email that paperwork from your email address with your name on it, that's a public record and it's not going to be anonymous.
So it sounds like it's something you can move on.
So, um, I have a suggestion. I think, I don't, I don't like the idea of being anonymous. I understand, I've had conversations with the people who are being attacked online or whatever. I, I think the biggest issue was the address and phone number because that's what the form says. I think we can easily remove the address and phone number from the process, you know, if there, as long as there is a point of contact, a good email address. Um, but let me ask this question first before I keep going. Is there, is there anything in our policy that would prohibit a board member from bringing a book challenge?
I don't think there's anything in policy that would prohibit-
I mean, we're somebody from, I'm going to say that, I say that because if someone really has a problem with bringing that, they're afraid of bringing it for themselves, they can pass it on to someone who's a little more bold. And if it is seriously an issue beyond that, they could even come to one of, the five of us and say, would you put the challenge in? I, I, but the idea of anonymously, I mean, it's kind of like when people put an anonymous note in the offering plate at church, I didn't like your sermon. You know, I mean, you know, just come on, own up. Uh, but present the challenge. Sorry for church references, but this is the, this is the world that I've lived in for 25 years. Um, but you know, just, I, I think we can eliminate, you know, people do get concerned with their safety, especially when addresses are on there, right? So I think we can take care of that without having to make it completely anonymous. But, you know, there's, there's other alternatives to people who are afraid to, to speak up.
So, Mr. Gibbs, what I hear is, yeah, we can, we can have it anonymous as long as there's a contact, which is an email address.
If, if you have an email address and there's communications going back and forth, those are public records. So it's not, there's no exemption for those. So if there's communication going back and forth between someone challenging, that is a public record. So it is not going to be anonymous.
But the actual idea that somebody can put together a email that is non-binding to their name and identifying would be possible. They just have to communicate through that email.
If they have an anonymized email address, then yeah, it doesn't say their name or anything.
Right.
They could potentially do that.
Absolutely.
We, we do have a requirement for it to be a residence.
And that's what he was saying. They can, they have to come in and show ID to drop off the paperwork at the district office. So the, the staff, whoever's accepting it, would have to verify that information upon receipt. They just will not document the name or anything, so.
If they want to go through that, but I think, to be honest with you, what Ms. Campbell was saying is good too, is that they have the opportunity to bring it to us to carry it over.
And they should. And if they, again, if they're allowed to send it with an email and the cited reasons why, and they could even follow up with one of us, uh, in that, in that case as well. But, uh, given that opportunity, uh, if we can put that in, that would be, that would be great.
I just want to remind everyone, uh, about one of the counties that received hundreds and hundreds of requests because of that loophole. Um, and so you could very much be setting up chaos for no reason. Um, I also would argue that, uh, the people who have sent lists and lists and lists to provide public schools have publicized that they did that as well. So, um, I'm, I'm with Ms. Campbell on this one. If somebody has something they're really concerned about, they're either going to say it themselves, have somebody else say it for them, or they're going to reach out to somebody at the district via telephone first and have a conversation about their concern before they put it in writing. Um, I don't, I don't know if this is a real issue. I think it's going to cause more problems.
I mean, um, so you have, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Jenkins are against it. Uh, Ms. Wright?
I, I hear what you guys are saying on both ends of this, and, but I also understand the idea of protecting someone's identity because of the backlash that they take from the community whenever they're looking at this. So, um, I would just say, I'm in favor of an anonymous, being, uh, being allowed to be anonymous. Um, and then also, again, submit that to the, to the board. If you have a request and you're afraid of your identity and you maybe want to go that route, submit it to all of us and let us formally put that forward instead. Uh, or one of us, any of us, if they want to. So, uh, I'm in favor of allowing it there to be anonymous.
I think it would need to be stated very clearly that if they do it that way, they're not going to get the chance to make their presentation-
Right.
-at the meeting. So it'll just be up to-
Well, and I would also say that the board member's not going to make that presentation for them either if, if they went through one of us, right? So they lose the ability to have presentation at the book challenging.
Okay. So I'm in favor of it also, so we'll move forward with it. Next up?
All right. So here, uh, "Books that are in formal review that do not have documentation of cited passages that demonstrate possible violation of items listed under step two, section E can be kept on the shelves to the end of the formal review." So, again, these are books that's-
Step two, sorry, I'm just trying to-
Are going into the formal review, but maybe the, the challenger just said title A, B, C, but there's no documentation of the, or cited why that they're even challenging it. Uh, that there's no need to pull those books off the shelves if, if there's no reason given that they shouldn't be there in the first place. Because that, that could really stop the needless reviews or challenges if they're not stating why. Because again, we could have an empty library if that's, if that's the case. So these are examples that have been brought up, so help me with that.
I, just, I'm a little unclear between the informal and formal. The change that you guys had just previously requested is once we get a formal request, it gets pulled off the shelf. Are we changing that or are-
So, go ahead.
The formal requests that are coming to you are giving you evidence of what's in the book on why the formal request is being made, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So as long as that's substantiated and it's with the request, then that, that's, is that what you're concerned about? Are you saying you're worried that somebody's just going to throw a title out there and now that book is pulled, even though there's nothing that is in that book that's being proven that it could possibly be harmful?
So in the form, part of the form is I'm filling out the reason for the, the request for it to go to formal. Um, we-
Can we make something that says that they have to cite, like the, the page, the, whatever it is that they're concerned about on why they're pushing forward with a formal?
Sure. I mean, we can do whatever you guys want. So, I just want to be clear because we haven't pulled books for informal. The board last time said, what, they have to turn that form, and then we're pulling the books. So you're saying in some cases, when they turn in the form, we won't pull the books? I just want to make sure I understand.
So can I, can I ask you a question, make sure I'm understanding what you're asking? So for example, if someone just said, I have an objection to Green Eggs and Ham, we're not going to start the formal process if they haven't cited on page 30 of Green Eggs and Ham, this is violates whatever. Is that-
Yeah. Of, of all the concerns, this is one that's pretty low because the book review committee can put that right back on the shelves, uh, quickly, but to, to make sure that it doesn't turn into something larger.
Well, might I suggest we could per, we could asterisk that part of the form and say, this is required, and, and-
Yep.
-that way we just mark, kind of like, you know, you can't get past one unless you fill that out.
Exactly.
Would that suffice? Where we're saying this is required.
At least it would create more of an effort of, of a challenge. So yes. Yes, yes, and yes.
Yeah.
Hang on a second. Are you okay with that?
Yeah. I mean, I, as long as it's, it's, I mean, I just, I don't know that it needs to go in the policy, but I understand because, I mean, I've already heard of instances where someone just, honestly, just for, to get back at somebody, well, I'm going to pull this book, and I'm, you know, just, and ugliness happens. So I, yeah, I don't, it needs to be something. We can't judge what they're citing because they could pull Green Eggs and Ham and say, this is whatever, but they'd each actually have to take the effort.
But we can compare it to Florida statute and make sure-
Right. But that would have to go through the process. Because then somebody's making, if, if they do cite something, even if it's utterly ridiculous, if we don't allow it to go through the process, then someone is making that call before it actually gets to the process.
Yeah.
And we're, we're not following the policy.
Yeah. We will update the form and bring those suggestions to you at the next one in two weeks.
Ms. Jenkins, did you have anything to say?
No, Mr. Susan, you don't need to call on me. Thank you.
Okay. Um, it sounds like you have a consensus on that one. Next one up, Jane?
All right. So this kind of goes back to the informal process when I asked you about for a timeline, and, and I'm fine with 30 days. And I'm fine with 30 days, and we all are up here, so that was good. But, "School board members can vote to fast-track any books on the formal review list and bring them to the top of the list if they are still on the shelves while waiting for a formal review to be complete." So if, if something comes straight to the board, uh, we can say this absolutely needs to go to a formal review. Uh, if, if, if it's, so we don't have to take it for the full 30 days if that's what an informal process has been taking, or i- if it, you know, if all five of us look at this and say, yeah, this, this thing just needs to go to a, a formal process, we can, uh, we can, we can do that. Uh, so it's, it's a fast-tracking progress. I mean, if, if a school, if, if someone came up tonight and said, here's this book we found, and, and this is what it's saying, you know, I'm not sure if the right course would be, well, great, let's bring it back to the, the school, and they'll get back to us within 30 days. Um, we, we should have the ability at that point to say, yeah, this, this needs to go right to a, a, a formal review. So that means it would, we'd fill out the paperwork, it would get taken off, and it would get, again, saving the, the media specialist's time and effort. If it's something that we say that's, it needs attention, we should be able to fast-track the process.
I don't think this one's necessary because of the way we're handled, the, what you said before. Because you, you said right here, if it's still on the shelves, because we, you had said in the paragraph before, we're keeping on the shelves if they don't provide a reason.
Well, it's going to be on the shelves during the informal process.
Informal, but you're talking about formal. So if we update the form and say, we're not going to start the formal process unless you actually put a reason, it, they won't be have, they, the formal process won't have even been initiated.
But do we not start all books on an informal basis?
Yes, but you're asking here, "School members can vote to fast-track any books on the formal review list and bring them to the top of the list if they're still on the shelves," see paragraph above. The, the, they wouldn't be on the shelves because I think we handled it. You can't, you can't-
Okay.
-just put a frivolous formal request without a reason. And I think that's what you're saying, why we should fast-track it. But now we don't need to do that because if, if you're just going to randomly put a book on there, you know, without a good reason, it's, um-
That kind of does take care of it, doesn't it?
Right. I think, I think that takes care of that for us.
Okay. We were going to get one way or the other. So that, there you go. We're getting it. Thank you.
You good on that one?
Yes.
Everybody else?
Oh, I like the next.
Good?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Trent.
All right. "Books, uh, used by the book committee members should be the library books that were removed from the shelves, and if needed, to utilize the public library if possible before purchasing new copies." This was in, in regards to the previous one where they were purchasing up to 10 copies of books that we were going to turn around and possibly remove from our libraries. It, again, it's just a way to save money, and since we're pulling books in the review process, we have them.
Yeah, I love that. I mean, that makes sense to me.
You good? Okay. I'm good with that. Next one?
All right. So this is for the book committee, so somehow if we can get this accomplished would be great. "Reading cited passages and having an understanding of the entire work is expected." Reading cited passages and having an understanding of the entire work is expected, but reading the book in its entirety is not necessary if cited passages are clearly in violation of Florida statute and/or items discussed in Step Two of Section E. For books that remain on the shelf while waiting for a formal review, several books can be reviewed at one time or at one review committee.
I'm pretty sure Florida statute cleared that up this last, they cleared this up, but they not when they came through with the book review policy that said that you don't have to read the entire book in its entirety, you're allowed to pull just the passage?
It has to be in context.
Sort of. So I'm, I'm going back to my interpretation of the change we made last time is when I receive a formal request or Ms. Klein receives a formal request, we are pulling that book. And so that's where I'm unclear. So typically, the informal process begins with actually even an email, right? They don't, they're, they're asking about a book, they're asking where it's at, they're asking the status. I'm assuming when I get that form, assuming it's completed out, I'm pulling the book because our new change is we're going to make sure this section is filled out pending review. Depending on how many books there are, that review may be soon, that review may be in a long time, but I believe based on the previous discussion of, I get a completed form, I'm going to notify schools to pull that book.
Right, so this last sentence for books that remain on the shelf while waiting for formal...
So I don't think there will be books on the shelf waiting for formal review, is what I'm saying.
You guys asked to remove the books. You guys asked for the books to be removed.
I, I, I have a problem with people not reading the entire book because statute specifically says...
Contact.
Right, it talks about taken as a whole. And listen, I, I think if it's, if it's in there and it's descriptive, sexually, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter if the whole rest of the book is fine, if this one section, page, whatever, yeah, I have a problem with that. But, but I still think they need to, in order to just be above board, I mean, I don't, I don't like wasting people's time, but we need to be honest with the process. I, I think what you maybe, what we're trying to get at is that we can go through it faster if they don't have to read the whole entire thing, they only have to go to the parts that this person said, this is a problem, this is a problem, this is a problem. But I don't know, Paul, that's a statute thing, the way that's worded in statute.
To be harmful to minors, you have to take the whole work into consideration. So to, to qualify under statute as harmful to minors, it's the work in its entirety, not cited sections of it.
Right, I think we're going to run afoul of our state statute as well as Supreme Court opinions.
I can't say that whether or not the district couldn't say, hey, we're just going to remove them anyways just because we don't like this two-sentence line on page 35. I mean, that would be a board decision ultimately, but you will not be doing it under statute if you're not doing the consideration of the work as a whole. So therefore you couldn't say it's inappropriate for children or it's harmful to minors.
Is that something we can look more into?
What he's saying is if you wanted to define it under those two terms, that you would have to do it, but if it was anything else, you could just say...
Legally, to be harmful to minors, it has the test in statute. That's your test. So you can't say it's harmful to minors and that's why we pulled it off the shelves if you're not going through that review to, to meet that definition. It has to be reviewed in its entirety.
So if you wanted to pull it not saying those terms, you can still pull it and you can still get it done, but it has to follow...
And our local state legislature is currently proposing removing the test from the statute itself.
Right.
So it's still there.
Hope they get to work on that.
So I, I just, I'm at, when I get a form, I'm pulling the book.
Yeah, I'm going to ask, I'm, I'm asking real quick, what is your direction on this?
I think we're, can I...
Yes, you can.
Just to jump in here, I think we're, we're like this, this two different mindsets happening. So prior to this policy being changed, it was taking an extremely long time to get a book reviewed, right? But now the policy's being changed, it, the books are being removed immediately, and so you're trying to fast-track them being reviewed to be able to be put back into this school with, with this policy. So I think it's just, to me, I, again, I, I'm going to use a horrible analogy, but if you had a Troya Brownies and it had a little bit of dog poop in it and you couldn't see it and you couldn't smell it and you couldn't taste it, it's still in there, right? And so for me, that's kind of where I'm at with this on, I know Ms. Klein's going, oh my gosh. No, but I, that's, I just, to me, I'm like going, hey, I don't think that it's, it's appropriate. So again, I think their, books don't remain on the shelf during the formal review process. So this is where the sentence is like kind of conflicting. This is where we're having a hard time. Several books can be reviewed at one time or at one book review committee. That's, you're trying to fast-track it. I understand the need for that. I guess where I'm kind of at an impasse with this is just the legislature's going to probably catch up and this is going to end up being a mute point and we're going to have to come back and make it align with statute here pretty soon anyways. So we can be proactive with it and say, hey, you don't have to read the entire book, you can read just the passage part of it, that's inappropriate, that's where I'm at. But I don't know where the rest of the board is.
Are we able to, I'll go back to, I think, what you were saying, Mr. Gibbs, are, are we able to say this is, this is what we want in Brevard?
Yeah.
I think the board can approve or not approve books. Okay, are you open for challenge? I have not reviewed whether or not someone would be able to challenge that decision, so I couldn't say you would be insulated from a lawsuit saying you've deprived my child of access to books without good cause because you didn't find that they were harmful to minors. I would have to do some research on that piece, but sitting here right now, you don't have any obligation or legal obligation to purchase the books anyways. The question is, since they've been purchased, can you remove them without it? And again, I don't know what the potential for liability would be on the backside of that, but you control the materials in your school.
I think the appropriate thing would just be say, this is what we would like to do and have Paul review it to make sure that it doesn't violate any of the laws and it stands up, and then bring it back if it's possible, and if it's not, bring it back and say, here's why. Maybe even reach out to Mr. Trent and explain it to him. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Sound good?
Good.
All right, next up. We had a consensus on that. Okay, thank you.
Was it, wait, 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 was it consensus to wait for legal review of that whole paragraph? Okay, thank you.
We're getting to the end of this.
Get it, get it, man.
Thank you so much. The last issue that I'm going to bring up is the concern that what we already have done on the committee and have put some books on the shelves that are not appropriate for some of the students in the school, but others. For example, a book that's okay for 10th graders to check out, but not, but not 9th graders. That really puts us at risk. The, the media specialists to, to make sure that that book would have to be guarded then and, and be close to them to make sure it doesn't need to be checked out to be read by a 9th grader or an 8th grader or 7th grader, depending on what, you know, if you're a 7 through 12 building. And you could pick up that book and go sit down and read it. We've already deemed it not appropriate for that. So two things could happen, somehow we, we have to look back and see which ones we've done this for, and, and if you're going to keep it in the school, because I think moving forward, it's going to be an in or out situation. I'm pretty sure this committee is going to look at it, it's appropriate, appropriate for this building or it's not. But some that they've already done that to, maybe needs to go back behind the media specialist for them to, to monitor that. I know there's some that are back there already. Or it gets back into the review process to, if it's appropriate to be in this campus or not. So this was, media specialist actually reached out to me and asked about these books. So what do we think?
I, I think we've, you know, the state is taking care of some of this for us because they've developed a new training that all our media specialists are now having to go through, and the additional responsibilities and the transparency, and we're putting all the titles online and all of that. I think when, this is always going to be an issue, for example, even in our elementaries, because we have all of our elementaries going from pre-K to 6th grade. And I'll just give you an example, The Hunger Games is on the shelf in many of our elementary schools because many of our 5th and 6th graders will read it. The Hunger Games is not necessarily appropriate for a 2nd grader, and you say, oh, they can't read it. No, I had a 2nd grader who could read it. It's not necessarily appropriate, in my mind as a parent, for a 2nd grader, and, and I know that many of our, I will give you an example, a media specialist at my children's school, when they would do the book fair, the scholastic book fairs, they had a 6th grade only table that unless your parents had given you permission to go and shop those books. So they're always going to be, even in our elementary setting, because you're talking about seven or eight possible grade levels in a single school, there's going to be that issue. Same with our junior seniors, we've got going from 7th to 12th. Our media specialists are already managing this in their own way. In the elementaries, it might be, if you're kindergarten, 1st and 2nd grade, you're over here until you're ready for the chapter book section unless you have special permission. And then they're keeping an eye on, you know, the kids who are starting to read at the upper levels so that it's, they know what's appropriate. Same thing with 7th through 12th graders, I don't know how they're managing it. Those media specialists are, you know, rock stars because they have to have that extra set of eyes and really know their collection, but they really know their collections, especially the great ones. They, and, you know, they get in there, they get to know them, they're more accountable than ever. So I just hesitate for us to do too much with this because, and I understand the concern, but because they're already having to do it. And if we get in there and dictate this, that, and the other, we're, we're ignoring the fact that they're already doing it and that, you know, I, I just don't know that, I think our book, when our committee makes their decision, and you talked about this in the last paragraph, they make the decision, they, they've already made some calls, this is going to be for this grade and up. It's really actually a lot for them to manage which grades can check it out. I mean, it's, and some of the, for the challenge books, sometimes it's easier just to put the ones, you know, to have the committee say, just put it back the shelf, behind the shelf, and they can pull that one. But we can't put every book that's only appropriate for high school behind a shelf at a junior, senior high. We can't do that. They don't have a big enough section. You know, it's just, it's just not reasonable. So I think, I don't, I'm not sure that this is practical to have that kind of a limit.
Okay, Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I don't know the last time we stepped foot in a library, but books are categorized by reading level, by type, by genre, as Ms. Campbell said, our media specialists are well aware, and this isn't Walmart, kids aren't self-checking themselves out, someone has to physically check them out, click on their face, click on their name, and scan that book. So, you know, it's insane to me, we're talking about this like, this is like drugs or weapons that kids are going to go find on the shelf and go sneak into the corner and, and take advantage of. There are plenty of barriers in place. If there is a book that's being questioned or challenged, that media specialist is going to be well aware of it already in their, in their library because they're the first person who gets a notice of it. So they're not going to hand over a book that's not appropriate for a 1st grader to a 1st grader, they're just not going to. And right now, they don't have assistants, and they're lucky if they get a volunteer to help them check in and out books inside of their library. So they're more aware than ever before what kids are taking home.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Ms., Ms. Wright, would you like to speak on the topic?
Yeah, here's where I'm at with this. When it comes to airing on the side of caution to protect a child's innocence, that's what we should always do. The fact that we're having to argue about these books, some of the passages that I've read are horrific, they should not be in our school libraries. If you want to buy that book for your child, by all means, that's your right as a parent to do so. But again, these policies should be very, very clear that we are going to air on the side of caution, and I think that we're getting there with being able to remove them. I'm, I'm never going to be in favor of having a section of the library that would be a dirty section or a maybe Nazi for every kid section. I just don't think that's appropriate at all. So for me, I'm a little bit extreme in this manner though, so.
Well, I, I just, I'm just wondering, what are, then are you, what are we, we need to be super clear what we're asking for. Because I hear you, and I don't necessarily disagree with, but, but you didn't, you didn't necessarily give direction, what, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to look like? Because we, if we're going to change it, we're going to put in policy, or we're going to give direction to staff to make, we need to tell them what we're asking for.
Yep, so Mr. Trent, what is your definition?
I, I believe going forward, we're, it's going to take care of itself because I do believe they're going to air on the side of in or out. They're not going to say odd grades can read this and even grades can't. It's not going to be like that. That was mentioned about drugs. I, I think, I think porn is equally as, is damaging to a, a young person's mind than drugs. So it is very important to me, all right? So, and this was coming from a media specialist that was asking, what do I do? And I, I think in the future, like I said, it's taken care of now. If there is any book that this book review committee in the past has said it's, it's good for 10th and above, I mean, I would really like the air on the side of it needs to be behind the librarian or the media specialist.
Just so you know, that's only been one book. I mean, and if we wanted to as a board to avoid that situation, we could, I mean, we could, what we haven't done is prescribe to the committee what they can and cannot do. In fact, we came up with that first meeting, it was get rid of all of them or let it all stay, and they came up with other, right? They all voted other, if you've watched the video. And the other was that particular book, decide, this is for 18 and up because it's an adult book, so it's going to go behind the shelf, and if you're not 18, you have to have specific...
Since it being one book, should, should we...
Right, right. That, that book was separate. The second book that was, has been done, there's only been two, right? The second book they decided 10th and up. So it was a problem then, if we, if we want to give some more parameters as to what they can and cannot do to not cause problems, I, I don't know. I, I do think some of this is going to, we've got to let the process have a chance to work. Personally, I'm kind of frustrated that we can't just move forward, you know, because right now we are, we do have a policy, but functionally, we do not have a policy because we keep pulling this one back. So I, like I said, I think it's going to work, and we're going to have, and we have a committee made up of what it's going to be now. But again, I'm just, I, we're not clear yet, what do you want? Make it clear what you want. Are you saying any book that, in the committee, this is talking about books that have gone through the committee, we're just saying, then you're, what you're asking like, seems like is to define for the committee what their options are. You can say, we're not going to have this book in Brevard Public Schools at all, or we can say it's going to only be allowed in high schools? Or, because then the, the problem with that is, this one is 10th and up, but it's a 9th. What about a junior, senior? If we say it's okay for high school, that's what's said, we can't have a section that only 7th to 9th graders can only go to this.
And that's what we said going forward, it's going to be a yes or a no for the, for that. So if, if we're, I don't want to dwell on the past of, if it is just one or two books, we'll, I, I think we'll just keep it as, if they're, if it's already there and they're managing it, so be it. I don't, I don't want it there at all. And again, it's not going to be that much of an issue moving forward. So I can, I can, I said I would bring it up, I could always go back and say, this is, it's in your library, we'll, we'll deal with it.
Yes, sir, just, just to mention, the, the books that we've had thus far have been predominantly high school titles, and it's been very clear that they're not appropriate for younger grades. I just want to make sure our policy can withstand a title that's perhaps in our elementary grades where the committee would say is appropriate for older grades. And so just in terms of longevity of the policy, I do think we have to specifically do that because we might be looking at a title that we want to say no to elementary, but okay for high school. So that, that's my only, in the yes, no category, there is still some gray area, just the titles we've done so far have just been high, high school relevant and middle school.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I, I just, I need to follow up on one thing that was said. Mr. Trent, I hear that you say porn is equally as damaging as drugs, but I want to remind you, if there's porn and pornography, it's already against state statute and it wouldn't even be behind the shelf. So the things that we're talking about have to go through the committee and be okay with the state statute that already exists.
Great point, Ms. Jenkins. Are we all okay with the direction? Do you feel pretty good with...
Well, I don't think we clarified the, the elementary versus our older kids, we need to...
Oh, I thought he had, okay, I apologize.
My understanding was you was pulling back. Are you pulling back from this suggestion, Mr. Trent? Because it sounded like you were.
We were on that, but, but, or Dr. Sullivan brought up another situation that I think Ms. Wright is piggybacking on, is that it? Because this wasn't, that ninth grade, 10th grade wasn't an elementary, high school issue.
Right. I think she was just saying, if we continue to change it, we're going to cause a problem.
Right, I have heard from, because we do need, it needs to outlive this board, this situation, we need to, we have to think forward on all of our policies, not that they're permanent, because they can be changed. But let's say if we ever developed a K-8, you know? I know, take a breath, but it's not, it's not, it's not impossible, you know? I mean, we, we have to think, I mean, our, the media specialists of that school is going to have to manage that situation.
Can we not have like an elementary leading and learning and a secondary leading and learning committee like that, so they're separate to some degree, right?
But I'm just saying, whatever the committee decides, that book is still going to be in the, are we saying at a K-8, where a book might be appropriate for a middle school, middle schooler, and the committee says it's fine for middle school, but it's not okay for elementary? What's a K-8 media specialist? If you're going where I think you're going in that situation, we put it in policy, then a media specialist at a K-8 is going to have to just pull the book and not have it at all. So I think we'd need to let this, you know, for the one book that we have, the one book, and listen, I know where these came from, I know who they came from. And it wasn't you originally, but I'm just, for the one book we're talking about, where they said 10 and up, everybody knows, a parent can still submit a letter to the school if they know, and say, I don't want my child reading this book, they'll put it in the notes, and they can, they can make sure that doesn't happen. I don't think we need to keep, you know, know that that will continue to happen, but for that particular book, you know, I think we're, I think we're good there, so.
I, just to clarify though, because I want to ask you, I'm just, I want to be clear on this. So if a book is challenged at the elementary level, it's pulled from all schools, period? Is that what you're saying to me? I mean, I think in the policy, we need to, we do need to be clear because there are books that are going to be appropriate for our older kids that may not be appropriate for elementary learners.
Yeah, I'm thinking Ms. Klein and I can work out some form issues with grade bands, if the, if the board would like us to work up some solutions where we have time to think about how we can address grade bands. And in the form that they submit, and potentially a form as the outcome of the hearing, you know, that everybody would sign, that clusters by grade bands, if the board would be amenable to that.
I would be in favor of that. I'd be, anybody else? We need three to be in favor.
Oh, I think, yeah, definitely, I would appreciate that work so much.
Thank you, guys.
So you guys are going to make a suggestion.
Are you okay now?
Yeah, we're going to work on it.
Good, okay, next up.
So lastly.
I thought he said lastly in the last one. I thought I heard him say, I thought I heard him say lastly. I thought I heard him. Oh, my gosh!
Lastly, I just wanted to be on record to know that this is not coming from the board or you, or even the state, that any teacher is being asked to remove every book out of their classroom, okay? That is not going on. So it, I've been fielding phone calls in this county that they are being asked. It is not from us or from this district. I just want to be clear, so I know we're being recorded.
And Mr. Trent, I appreciate that. There was a lot of confusion and fear when this first started, where those communications were going out, but it was in a sense to protect staff, not to manage what they were doing. Because when this law was originally passed, there was no actual guidance to the districts in how to enact the law. And so unfortunately, those rumors are still existing out there, so thank you for clarifying again.
And that was recent, it was over the, in the last week, so I just want to make sure that wasn't coming out.
So no, we are not asking for classroom.
And I know you're not.
Yes. But we are looking at a tool, electronic tool, to help our classroom teachers make their classroom libraries a online searchable document.
Oh, very nice.
So we're looking at that right now.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
As fast as you can on that. All right, well, thank you very much. That finishes up Board Policy 2521. Next topic is athletics. Everybody understands that Dr. Schiller and I met a couple months ago, set direction to put this on a discussion topic. We met yesterday and last week over this, and he said that he wants to come forward on the 28th afterwards and pull it all together. So we have an opportunity for Mr. Ramjit to present with others on athletics. If you guys can please come forward. Mr. Parr, hang on just a second. Mr. Parr and all you guys can take the front rows. I think Mr. Ramjit, Mrs. Aguirre had your presentation on the thing. Can you show them how to do that for them and stuff like that? So if you guys can come forward, Mr. Ramjit, you should have it on there. I did you, I see Sean. Hey, guys, how you doing?
Mr. Chairman.
If you want, yeah, just hang on just a second. If you guys will come forward and sit at the tables, these are the ones with the microphones. Is that cool?
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I, I am, I know you just said, talked about the presentation and all that, but I am, I have concerns with us having this discussion. This was brought up by a board member request, at your request, for us to have this discussion. When we have discussion items as a board, it's usually a time for us to start thinking about and then trying to get some direction to the staff. You just alluded to it, that the direction was already given to Dr. Schiller. Dr. Schiller has had a task force made up of six A.D.s, I believe, human resources, transportation, facilities. They've been meeting and working on it, they're working on a presentation, it's my understanding, on March 28th. So I'm not really sure why we are going to have a staff member present their own presentation that they've been putting together, just so the rest of the board knows, outside of the task force that Dr. Schiller has put together, a separate presentation. I find that to be highly inappropriate, and I, I see that guests have been invited. We've had, when we have discussion items, discussion items, we've got people here, and you know, when we had our meeting in December, we had this conversation about no surprises, we've had it several times since then. We should not be walking in as board members now, all of a sudden, recognizing that we're supposed to be having a discussion, but yet there's an agenda already set by you with guests who are coming. This is, these people are not here at the invitation of the superintendent. All the board needs to understand that. I'm not sure where the invitation came out, if it came from you, if it came from Dr. Ramjit, but these people, Dr. Schiller, can you confirm that for me? These people are not here at your invitation.
That is correct.
Okay, so here we have an interim superintendent that we have brought in, and no, no offense to the people who have come, love the work, we may be presenting fantastic ideas, but I have, when we, Dr. Schiller has already been tasked with this, we brought him in for his excellent experience in so many districts across the country. I think what's about to happen is highly inappropriate.
Okay, so can I?
And we can let the task force that he's, and trust their, his professionalism, their professionalism, because I think we're about to offend the people who've been doing that great work, which includes six, at least six A.D.s.
So thank you for that. At no time did Dr. Schiller ever say that he wanted to bring forward a presentation with that. Him and I had had discussions about a month and a half ago about putting athletics on during this time. So what I did was, as I put the athletics on here, and we're talking about discussing, at no point are we making decisions on anything. We are being appropriately given a presentation, which is what we have during discussions, and we're doing that moving forward. There's no issue, there's no asking you to make decisions based on anything. This was something that we discussed before, Dr. Schiller and I put it on there, and at no time had we before done this. I don't think that, I think the inappropriate piece is, is that athletics is a component, Dr. Schiller is in charge of that from the district, he's been part of those meetings that you've been meeting, or Dr. Ramjit is a part of those meetings. And I had a discussion with Dr. Schiller earlier that said that this is great, we'll move forward, he can present, and then Dr. Schiller is going to come back with the finalized policy recommendations, and at that point is where we're moving forward. So I don't know where the confusion is at.
I don't think that's true. Dr. Schiller?
Dr. Schiller, didn't we meet today and you said, okay, I'll come back on the, we did, today. And to be honest with you, I put this on the agenda per a conversation, Dr. Schiller never brought it up until yesterday that he had had a situation and an issue with it. So here we had all of these things moving forward, and I don't think it's inappropriate to have the guy that we'd said that would come forward to do it and then present in front of us, as long as we're not giving any kind of direction. And I don't, he's the head of athletics, he's been here for two years.
I understand that, but what's inappropriate is to have a staff member, an assistant director, develop and present a plan outside and circumventing, circumventing the authority of his supervisor, which is the superintendent. Developing a plan outside of.
Nobody here is asking for any kind of direction to be given.
The task force, we, we are going to be reviewing, I hope we have the time, we were charged with reviewing our policies, our bylaw policies in the zeros and our policies in the 1000s. I know that we've been, that was, we were task force. There are so many things in those policies that define the role of the board, the role of the superintendent. It is not appropriate for a staff member who is a subordinate to the superintendent to develop a presentation to present to us outside of the authority of the superintendent, who is already doing the same work and is doing it in collaboration with other staff members. And you said that Dr. Schiller told, did not tell you that he was, and I actually know that that is not necessarily true. Dr. Schiller, did you not tell, because I asked you how that was going, and you said, I was preparing stuff to be ready on March 28th.
So I will say again that I put this on the agenda, and as a board chair, I can call a special meeting, I can ask for any kind of a topic to come up. If you remember, we went ahead and mask mandated with a school board chairman calling a mask mandate meeting on Friday for Monday to have people present and push a policy. That is the truth.
No, it was a board majority.
And you have the authority to call it. So this was not a just circumstantial issue, this was something that we've discussed, we put on the calendar, and I did not know that this was an issue that he was presenting and all these other things until yesterday. And had we done that, we discussed it, it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But when you have the man that's the head of athletics and you're asking him to give a presentation over topics that we should probably listen to, and you have Dr. Schiller coming in for a final policy, I don't think that there's a problem with that. I have authority.
Who asked this person to do the presentation?
Miss, I am speaking, Ms. Campbell. So you have presented.
Mrs. Susan, you talked over her as well.
I am speaking, Ms. Campbell and Ms. Jenkins. The issue is, is that we have an agenda to go through. You've made your points. We have complete right to have him present, and I would like him to present, that's it.
So you, you directed the assistant?
No, we met together and we put it on the agenda.
Dr. Schiller, did you ask Dr. Ramjit? No, no, I need an answer to this question, because we're violating policy.
They're not violating policy.
Dr. Schiller, did you ask Dr. Ramjit to develop this presentation?
No.
Board?
And am I allowed to call a meeting? Yes. Am I allowed to put something on the agenda? Yes. Am I allowed to have somebody present? Yes.
Are you allowed to go to a staff member and direct them to do something?
I did not. I put it on the agenda and asked him a long time ago if he would be prepared to do it. He said, sure, so I put it on there.
You asked, so you just, so you asked Dr. Ramjit, you asked an assistant director to do something.
I, oh my, is it okay if they present?
I guess I'm confused. I'm like, what is happening right now? I'm not really sure. This has been on the agenda since the 20th of February, so I assumed we were obviously going to, some kind of presentation about athletics, but I don't know.
Discussion. So it was put on the agenda by Mr. Susan in the, in the manner that we each can by letting Tammy know, hey, can we put it on for discussion? This is any other topic we put on for discussion. It was not put on by Dr. Schiller. And when we talk about agenda development, the agenda by our bylaws are supposed to be developed by the superintendent in conjunction with the chairman. So there's two issues. One is, we can put things on for discussion, we can put things on for discussion all day long. We can, by submitting that to Tammy, the chair looks at it, the superintendent, you know, to have that discussion. Discussion. A presentation is different. And as a board member, we should not be circumventing the authority of the superintendent to go to a staff member and ask them to do work for us, especially outside, that is not our authority to do. And like I said, again, it is on top of violating our policy, it is insulting, unprofessional to the task force who is doing this work in a comprehensive manner, facilities, human resources, transportation, is my understanding from the questions that I have asked. It is very inappropriate for a staff member to be circumventing that process. It's very inappropriate for a board member to ask a staff member to do that. And again, the superintendent has, has a plan that's being worked, they have met several times, because I've asked that question, and they're preparing a presentation for us to address the issues in athletics. So board, I'm just letting you know, if we continue this, we have, we have potential issues violating our policy, and certainly we have already had evidence that a board member went around the authority of the superintendent to task a staff member, which we don't have direct authority over anyone but to, as a board as a whole, not an individual, to employees, and that is the superintendent and the district, and our board attorney.
Okay, so many times throughout our careers, we've always asked staff to do something, whether that's a request for public information, whether that's all these different pieces, there's no issue there. Having something put on the agenda prior to ever knowing that there was a committee that was being formed, prior to ever knowing that there was a meeting on the 28th. Dr. Schiller, when did I find out about your meeting on the 28th? It would have been last Friday that this was an issue, and then you didn't ask me to officially pull it until yesterday, is that correct?
No.
Okay, when, then when is it that you came to me and told me that you had an issue with this and you wanted me to pull it?
Last week, one day.
No, no.
Between 2:00 and 7:30.
That is not, you never asked me to pull the agenda item.
I have put in writing, and I've told you verbally, sir, my best advice was that it is not the right time to put the proposal or the presentation on, asked you to consider withdrawing.
So here's, here's what it is, is that we already had the thing on the agenda, we're sitting there for a long time with it on there, and at no time was this committee that has only been together for two, maybe three weeks, and then you have the guy that was actually in charge of athletics, and just ask him to give a presentation, and then we can discuss, and we can move forward, and Dr. Schiller brings it back. We had a discussion today, Dr. Schiller, where you and I said that have him present, and then you come back on the 28th. Is that not what we talked about?
That's partially correct.
Yes, so I like, so just, I will tell you, there is no issue here besides a discussion, there is no board direction besides. But I could call a special meeting and say, I want to have a special meeting on athletics, and I want to give direction on it. We mask mandated this thing, so there's no. Hang on, Ms. Campbell, because you say, hang on, I am going to go. The other issue is, is that there is no problem with me calling a meeting, me calling an item on the agenda. You spoke to the agenda process. The agenda process is that Dr. Schiller and staff develop an agenda, they bring it forward. Once it's published, it's my agenda. I can then remove or add any item that I would like. There is no issue there. I never sat there and brought this up as a, as a issue, and we are, literally have community people that are here to present in a non-policy-driven, nothing, just to present on some of the issues, and you're making it as if there's some kind of major issue here, and it's not. It's the guy that's been in charge for the last two years making a presentation over something that Dr. Schiller and I talked about, Schiller and I talked about, to set it on the calendar as we met yesterday, to set all of the other topics that we have later on. So we sat there and said, all of these other topics that we had, I have the whiteboard where it says where we were going to put the dates in. So all I did was put it on the agenda per what our discussion was, then when it comes up, it sits there for a week, there's nobody on there, and then I, Dr. Schiller had concerns about something else rather than the actual presentation, and then it goes through the whole process, and then yesterday, for the first time, the 28th is coming, we're going to do these different things, and Dr. Schiller and I met today, and he said, we can meet today, and then I'll come back on the 28th. I was like, okay. So there's not, I don't understand if the board chair is not allowed to call for a meeting. I think that it's inappropriate that we ask some of our leaders inside the community to come in and speak, and it's just for discussion. And I don't know where you would have an issue with that.
I'm going to address one thing, I'd like Dr. Schiller to get a chance to speak more than just a yes or no answer.
Absolutely. In our policy, by our bylaws, the chairman can call a meeting. The chairman or any other board member should not be directing staff to develop a presentation, except for the superintendent. The superintendent is already working on a presentation. You asked a staff member outside of the chain of authority to develop a presentation, to invite the guest to come and speak to us, to do work outside of his authority, which is the superintendent. I am very sorry, guys, that you are even having to sit in here and deal with all of this, and it's nothing against you, you know that I love all of you. But this is about governance. This is about governance.
What'd you say, Mr. Parr?
This is about governance and our roles of board.
So, I appreciate.
And I would like Dr. Schiller to have a chance. And we may go on, and the board, you know, if the board wants to go ahead and hear it, and we come back on the 28th again, that will look, we're in the, we're in the superintendent search process, and what does it look like for the public to realize that a board member can go around the superintendent and ask staff to do something outside of their authority? So, Dr. Schiller, would you, I mean, where, when, when you look at your vast experience from coming all over the place, what is a proper process that we should be following?
Let me begin, let me begin by just circulating to the board a copy again of the pertinent policies that govern the role of the board, the powers of a board, as, as defined by Florida statutes and your policies and the guidelines that you all signed.
And I'd like to draw attention to these. Dr. Schiller, when I sat today and asked you and talked to you, and you had no...
Point of order.
With your permission, I might want to point some of these out. We have gone through these, and it might be worthwhile to put everything in context before I go specifically into this particular agenda item, which was not generated by me. And the presentation has not been authorized or approved for public consumption by me. And until I received a 6:31 a.m. this morning and reviewed it with its author at noon until the moment I walked in here, I was told that no one else has seen this presentation, nor has it been time phased. But if I would point out that you've seen this, you understand the definitions and the law under which I am charged by law and by my employment agreement to operate under, which speaks about many of the items that are under review here. And this is nothing personal. This is just simply, as pointed out, I think a very important threshold point to clarify and for us to all internalize what our respective roles and powers and authorities are. And if I might just, and I apologize if I'm pedantic, but it speaks to 122.1 Member Powers. And it speaks to, in the second paragraph, the general powers of the board in number 122 are determination of educational policies, the adoption of such rules and regulations to supplement those. And it goes on, but that goes on to District Organization 1001. This policy, and these are anchored into the Florida statutes. This second paragraph, the superintendent shall be the chief executive officer of the district and shall define, and it goes on. But the bottom line is that the responsibility, and the third paragraph speaks, shall flow clearly from the superintendent through the administrative staff to the operational personnel. And that excludes the two board, the two board employees of the board council and the superintendent. And it goes on, as you can see, but I would draw your attention to 10:30. Again, anchored in the Florida statutes on the second page, second sentence. The superintendent shall be directly responsible to the board for the performance of the following duties and responsibilities. A, keep the board informed of school operation by preparing board agenda and providing oral and written communications and so forth, and requesting special board meetings that become necessary to keep the board properly informed. G speaks to prepare reports to the board on the conditions of the school district. K, to direct and supervise the work of all the schools' offices and employees of the board, and they shall be subordinate to the superintendent in all matters, including those specifically assigned to those rules and regulations of a particular department, division, or official. M, assigning the staff to respective duties, evaluating, analyzing the results of instructional program. And that is something that we have on the priority list that we need to bring to the board right quick. Delegate authority to the staff in all matters, but still be held full responsible. And just to go on, the work session may be called by the chairman, the superintendent, or a majority of board members solely for the purpose of exploring matters, which you're doing. And it moves on, the work, what work sessions are about, and something that we have been trying to instill, and I think with some good success, is the board, the staff, staff-to-board communications that are outlined. Being that, it speaks to the superintendent as your, as the law provides, a chief executive officer. And all I'm saying is the fact that, as my calendar will note, that early on, in January, I started with working very closely with Ms. Hahn, as I would, the development of the entire capital needs program that would be recommended, of which facilities is one such item. On February 3rd, she provided me with an extensive spreadsheet, which we're going to provide to the board of the condition and needs of every school's athletic facilities throughout here. You know the quality of the work that she does. I learned about that there was an actual prepared presentation when I was directed by the board chair yesterday to contact the assistant superintendent for it. Up to that point in time, I had no knowledge whatsoever that there was a presentation that was prepared in writing. So I did so. I had no knowledge prior to that, that a written presentation is such that you, that it will be presented, which has not been presented to anyone else here, nor to the board chair, about what it is or time phase. I sat down today, Mr. Brune and I, with the assistant director, and reviewed. And again, in my judgment, had this been brought to me as the work of any of our staff members to be presented here, it would be unacceptable in the first draft and even this draft. It's not been time phased. It goes probably with questions and answers almost two hours. I think we've allotted 30 minutes to this. I, I cannot understand, we started, as my calendar will show, I had asked Dr. Ramsick to set up a meeting with the 28 athletic directors, which for 1 hour and 34 minutes, I met with at Palm Bay and reviewed every issue. It was a working meeting, not a kumbaya. I don't work that way. In order to go through everything that they felt encompassed the athletics program, ranging from the transportation matters, the programs coming all the way through elementary, middle, high school, the co-curricular matters, umpires, officials, referees, all budgetary, fiscal, every aspect of human resources, facilities, it goes on. I then asked, and Dr. Ramsick and the athletic directors, since pulling 28 people out, to please identify and select and see if there'd be five or six that would serve as a core group. Minutes are kept of every meeting. They are available. They're distributed to all athletic directors for feedback, so everyone is fully informed. We have met already on two occasions. There are three more planned over the next two weeks, three weeks, I should say, leading up to what had been identified and placed on the agenda three weeks in advance on the March 28th workshop session, to give to you much liked in the transportation, at least a first shot at the best thinking of the issues we resolved, the issues outstanding, and more importantly, I recommend it for your consideration, solutions that come out of the work, not only of the athletic directors, but it comes out of the work of each of the cabinet members in their respective areas who have been part of these meetings to clarify and expand on hiring, HR matters. As an example, transportation. Ms. Hahn is on the process with me to now, for her, and we've already scheduled the meetings to meet with all the athletic directors, and she, as you know, will be personally on-site after talking about with them and going through all their needs. This is what, my aim was to bring back the work of this work group like I did transportation. Now, my intention had been, although not expressed, because I'm trying to put this together along with a lot of other things that Mr. Susan and I have agreed are absolutely critical items which we want to get to, and on behalf of the work of this board, which I fully support as soon as we can put them on the agenda, that there is background information that was very good for everyone to understand about the numbers of the leagues that we're in, the number of whatever, all of that. But the real hard work piece with what I hope for, the layout for you as options and for solutions, integrated with the ongoing plan for the capital improvement budget and the development of the program side of our general budget, all that fold up, how all the pieces will fit. I met with Dr. Ramsit and again with Mr. Brune to try to look at this presentation that had come to my attention without any previous information nor any information provided during any of the AD meetings about this, to see frankly how to go forward today. I'm as anxious to see this presentation that's presented as there are a variety of options of what can be done, as you are. And so, that's the, I, I'm trying to operate like you've, I'm required by law and my employment contract according to the laws of the state and policies. And it's how it is in other districts. Florida's a little bit different, just a little bit different than many other states. Frankly, Florida provides the superintendent with far more authority than many states, much more. And it has the board very well positioned to be policy, administrative rule, directionally focused. And that's what I think you know, that why I've been going through all the policies systematically, why I've been stressing that we do the philosophy, vision, goals of this board, as well as to have all of this worked through as you go through with your process to determine who will be your permanent leader, so that these particular matters are not going to in any way waylay. Now, well, all the issues that we have in so many areas, and we've identified many that we need to bring to the board's attention, and Mr. Susan will be doing that with my full support because we did this collaboratively of going forward in our priorities. This small blip, and that's what I would call it, is just that. Miscommunication, perhaps not understanding chain of command properly, and at the late hour of the last minute, my seeing this for the first time, I can't make lemonade out of lemons entirely. I don't have sweetener to it. There's a way that this could go forward if done properly, but nevertheless, it is scheduled as a main presentation, as one of the top priorities, and it's gonna be presented not by me, but the work group who has put this together. I serve to provide direction and advice, and my background of having done this for a lot of years, these are the people who will make it happen. If you don't make all the decisions, because there are a lot of decisions being made forward, we've set the predicate for your permanent superintendent. And that is the, the bottom line of it.
Dr. Schiller, I just wanted to let you know, it has been on the agenda for a full week that said that Andrew Ramjet was going to present. I think it's been on for two weeks. And when we met before, you had said, almost a week, possibly longer ago, you said, Mr. Susan, I haven't seen the presentation. And I said, well, if you can, reach out to Dr. Ramjet and ask him.
Right.
And, and you, and, and so this last minute, like this just all of a sudden happened, you could have reached out to him and gotten it, that's okay. But like where I'm at right now is, is that we had agreed earlier this morning that we would move forward with the presentation and stuff like that, and at no point did you say that you were gonna bring the, like, board powers and stuff like that together. I would have prepared the board powers that allow the chair to call the meeting, to call for, for, I mean, I add agenda items all the time. The issue, the issue is...
How do we, how do we move forward?
We move forward in the event that the rest of the, like, this has been on the agenda. Dr. Schiller said it's okay to present. We let Schiller, we let him present. We duly note what Ms. Campbell's trying to say, and we move on. I mean, like this, it's not a, it's not an issue. Dr. Schiller has said it. We just have duly noted, and let's go.
So, Dr. Schiller, I appreciate you taking the deep dive that you are taking into the, into these different departments that we've asked. And obviously, we have a lot of athletic directors that are here that are wanting to speak, and there are people and our staff. And so, again, how do we honor them and let them have their, we don't have time for a two-hour presentation, I'll be completely honest on that. We don't, we're never gonna get through our policies if we don't do that. But at the same time, I don't want to say to our people that are, you know, these are our staff, that we don't want to hear what you have to say, because we want to hear what they have to say, you know? So how do we move forward, or can we work together and collaborate on that?
That's not my item. Dr. Schiller had allotted, said that we had allotted 30 minutes to it. I think that, I don't know if that's enough. I think it's a little bit longer than that, but I think we need to listen to Andrew Ramjet and move forward. I mean, like, I think that that's what we came here to do. It was on the agenda for almost two weeks. It was, I mean, okay?
I think we, I think we honor people's time by following policy and procedure from the get-go. That's how we honor people's time. And not only having to have this conversation once again about the roles and responsibility of a chairman wasting time, but it's also a waste of time to ask a staff member to develop something that's already being developed, and it's also a waste of time when the board doesn't get to see it in advance and review it, ask questions, have questions prepared. That's also a waste of people's time. And Mr. Susan, there was one thing you said that I have to talk about. You said, it's my agenda. No. It's the board's agenda.
Okay.
And we all should be aware of what's going on it and have, and have some kind of notice ahead of time, especially with a topic like this. It makes absolutely no sense why we didn't have any notice about it.
And I think it would be duly noted that it sat on there forever.
I'm not done. It didn't sit on there forever. Point of order.
You stopped speaking, so the thing is, is that...
Excuse me, do not tell me to stop speaking. I'm not finished, sir.
I said, you stopped speaking, and that's why I started speaking.
Please, please. And you also told our superintendent that he could have reached out to someone who is subordinate to him.
Because it's not my right to do that.
That's not how it works. Point of order, Mr. Susan. You clearly don't like criticism, but unfortunately, we've seen you do this time and time again. It's a problem. And it is frustrating that we're wasting people's time, but it is something that's important to talk about. Because again, I don't know if you all realize, we got an email yesterday saying that we're gonna need to extend our workshops or have additional workshops because we have so much to talk about, but we're wasting time by not preparing each other with what we're gonna talk about ahead of time.
Okay. We good to move forward? Yep.
I don't know what is even happening.
So, Dr. Schiller, clearly you have not, this was not your presentation, this is not, this is, you have, you're saying right now that you can't put your seal of approval on this.
He agreed to move forward with it.
But Dr. Ramjet is your subordinate, so is it all right with you if, knowing all of those parameters, is it all right with you if Dr. Ramjet, who is your employee, moves forward with a presentation noting that it is not the official presentation and it has not been sanctioned by you?
He already agreed to it, and I never even knew that this was happening. Go ahead, Dr. Schiller.
I'm not, I'm not at all happy with this, particularly the fact that there have been adequate opportunities at the meetings and others to contribute and to explain to his superior, as well as the other ADs, that something was being developed. But in, in deference to the fact that there are professionals and members of the community who have been invited, whom I've never met nor have given their time, I do think it would be most considerate of the board that a period of time is allotted so we can all see what is being done. Again, I made my, I made my statement with regard to process. And I would just reiterate that the board chair and I are 99.9% in alignment of direction and virtually everything. We agree to disagree for this 1.1% of this piece. I do not want in any way, shape, or form, or this bit of a disruption or a lack of communication to stop the board's progress and the extent to which of the kind of important work that this board is doing and will continue to do in the very difficult decisions it must do.
And I would, and I would appreciate, and I would appreciate that the next time that we have something that you're gonna bring out pre-printed policies and everything else, that at least say that you're going to do that so that I can prepare myself. So with that, he's already...
Can I ask a request, please?
They are not part of the discussion.
Can I ask a request, please? Can we take a five-minute break to clear the room of like awkwardness and tension for our guests who are gonna come up here and speak, which is already uncomfortable to begin with?
All right, we'll break, and if you guys can come forward. All right, we'll break, and if you guys can come forward. Welcome back. You have the floor, Mr. Ramjet, for the athletic presentation.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Schiller, community members. My name is Dr. Andrew Ramjet. I am the Assistant Director of Student Activities for Brevard Public Schools. Today, we will be doing a overview of district athletics. In fairness to everyone's time, I will try to get through this presentation as fast as possible. Myself, I will be doing the athletic analysis. Ms. Han will be discussing athletic facilities. Mr. Aaron Parr will be discussing athletic trainers. Sean Simmons, Evan Ernst, of who we play for, will be discussing heart screenings. Mr. Steve Muzzi will be discussing the officials, the Midcoast Officials Association, MCOA. I'll be discussing Title IX in athletics.
Oh, there we go. All right, thank you. I just said, I was like, I can't see what you're looking at.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So within each BPS high school, there is an activity coordinator who is also the athletic director. Activity coordinators and athletic directors are classified as teachers who receive a supplement. Schools with 1,200-plus students receive an additional supplement for an assistant athletic director. Each middle school has an athletic director, but not an activity coordinator. All middle school athletic directors teach a minimum of six class periods per day and receive a supplement. There are currently no athletic director or activity coordinators at the elementary level. Based on all available data, there are currently 904 coaches within Brevard Public Schools. A staggering 86% of our coaches are community coaches or volunteer coaches. Only 14% of our coaches are full-time BPS employees, instructional or non-instructional. Based on data provided by the Florida High School Athletic Association, Brevard Public Schools has the largest number of community coaches and volunteer coaches in Florida. With having a high number of community and volunteer coaches come a range of issues. Your community coaches and volunteer coaches are not on campus throughout the school day. Not having your coaches on campus leads to a higher amount of discipline. It leads to attendance issues. It leads to just a variety of other issues that stem from not having coaches on campus. Another issue are, community coaches and volunteer coaches are not provided with an @brevardschools.org email address. By not having an email address, it's hard for the athletic directors at each school location to communicate directly with their coaches, which leads to a number of issues. There is a high turnover in community coaches and volunteer coaches. This school year alone, there have been roughly 200, said again, 200 coaching vacancy announcements posted. That's roughly 28% of supplemented coaching positions in the school district. And we still have three months left. There is also a lack of training and awareness of BPS policies. By having a high turnover of community coaches and volunteer coaches, they're not receiving adequate training on what is, what are the do's and don'ts of the school district, which leads to multiple issues. Very briefly, there is not an overall athletics budget in the school district. There is not a consistent method used across BPS regarding athletics funding. Principals currently set overall athletic budgets for the school year. Schools generate their revenue from gate receipts, also known as ticket, ticket revenue, excuse me. Most school athletic programs are being run at a loss. Currently, Brevard Public Schools provides equalization funds to each high school and middle school. High schools currently receive 11,800 equalization funds. Middle schools currently receive 800 in equalization funds. Junior, senior high schools receive 12,600 in combined equalization funds. The current model of equalization funding is inequitable in the school district. Schools with greater athletic funding needs are being funded at the same level as schools with less athletic funding needs, providing a great inequity in the school district. When it comes to transportation, not all athletic programs are, provide transportation for their students to and from athletic competition. Some schools rely primarily on students finding their own methods of transportation to athletic competition and practices. This includes students driving themselves and parents. Some booster clubs pay for transportation due to lack of athletic funding. However, not every program in the district has a booster club. There are some schools not, well, all schools are not provided reimbursement for athletic transportation, but one that sticks out is Rockledge High School. Rockledge High School plays football at McClarty Stadium. This past school year, they spent over $4,000 on transporting their own students, excuse me, their own student athletes to McClarty Stadium to play in mandatory FHSAA competition, and they have not been reimbursed. With students providing their own transportation to and from athletic competition, there is a range of liability and safety concerns. Due to the current ongoing district transportation issues, which is no one's fault, some schools who use district transportation have no other option but to schedule transportation during the school day prior to the conclusion of this, of the school day. So for example, I was at a school, Bayside High School, last Friday, and students were scheduled for a 5:00 competition, but they left the school at 12:00 simply because of the fact that there was no other time that they could be picked up, causing them to miss two periods of class. Due to the rising cost of transportation, contracted vendors can no longer offer transportation as pre-negotiated rates. Schools are left without transportation to required FHSAA competition. The cost of participating in BPS athletics. Most athletic programs must charge a fee for students to participate in athletics, also known as pay-for-play. Fees vary based on specific sports. A few weeks back, I was at Astronaut High School, and I was shocked to find out that competitive cheerleaders are being charged $1,700 to participate in competitive cheer. Pay-for-play contributes to inequities in sports participation for low-income students, already at a higher risk for poorer health outcomes. Athletic programs fundraise to help minimize costs. However, all costs are not covered through fundraising. This leads to the haves and the have-nots. Oh, Dad, I missed one. So, middle school athletics. There is no need in the community, there is a need, excuse me, in the community to expand middle school athletics beyond the two current sports. With ESSER funds, all volleyball and soccer equipment has been purchased for each of our 11 middle schools. Equipment can be used for both intramurals and competitive athletics. Lack of middle school, excuse me, lack of middle school athletic opportunities has led to lower numbers of athletic participation. There's no pipeline of kids going from middle school to high school participating in athletics, which has led to lower participation numbers. Currently, at the elementary level, there are no athletic programs, no after-school athletic programs, no recreational athletic programs. And as we know, athletics provide a host of benefits for students, including social skills, motor skills, preparation for team sports, and mindfulness. Next, we have athletic facilities, and Ms. Sue Han.
While Ms. Sue comes up, I wanted to mention that the haves and have-nots is becoming more of a discrepancy, because you have students who, because of diabetes and other issues, are not participating in sports. So what ends up happening is, is instead of spending $1,000 to $2,000 to play soccer on traveling or whatever it is, they are forced to not have an opportunity because the schools used to offer sports. Go ahead, Ms. Han.
Good afternoon, everyone. Really, my role in this is simply around capital facilities. And about two years ago, we started thinking about capital facilities a little bit more holistically and kind of on a longer-term basis. And so you've seen in the past capital plans that the school boards have, the school board has approved previously is some multi-year projects, particularly around athletics, but also around some other facilities such as elementary pavilions, parking lots, things that need kind of a multi-year approach. So we're looking at that same type of thing in the athletic realm. We do have a fairly comprehensive assessment of all of our athletic facilities as they stand today. And that was really the genesis of the track renewal program that you saw in the SRTAX plan, as well as the regularization plan. That came out of coordination with Dr. Ramjet and the athletic directors in the schools as to what was an important athletic need. So we do a lot of our own work in terms of assessment of what we have. We coordinate with Dr. Ramjet and the athletic directors and the leading and learning side of the house as far as things that we need that we don't have. And those are two very different things. Both of those fit into the capital plan. And then the capital plan in general includes much more than just athletics. So there's a pie, there's an athletics piece of the pie, and then there's the, the two different sort of parts of the pie that are, include renewal of what we have, or something that we don't have that we, that we need. And so we really look at all of those things. But just to be clear, there is no separate athletics capital plan. There is a capital plan that includes athletics, and that includes other things such as school buses. It includes FFNE for elementary, secondary, and student services. It includes educational technology. It includes facility renewal. It includes security. So all of those things are in the plan, and that is part of the budget development process. And that's what we'll be working on over the next probably 30 to 60 days in terms of bringing a capital plan back to the board that includes all of those things, as well as the athletic subset. In terms of what I'm doing now, I'm doing sort of normal due diligence with the users of capital facilities. So talking with Dr. Ramjet and the athletic directors, the assistant principals, getting some feedback as to what their capital needs are. Talking with the leading and learning student services side of the house, what are their needs in terms of capital? And we try to bring all those things together and then work with Russell Cheetum, Mr. Wilson, as to their capital needs and within the broader umbrella of what's available in terms of what Ms. Lesinski is projecting for available capital. So that's kind of the process outline. March 28th is when I've been asked by Dr. Schiller to come back with, with some more information for the board in terms of the capital plan and the athletics component to it as a part of the larger group. And you'll also see work that I'm doing outside of athletics in terms of the, the capital planning process. So that is where I am today.
Thank you so much, Sue. I think that your build-out of all of the tracks and then your discussion that you're going to bring back in a couple of weeks, the one, three, and five-year plan, really appreciate it. Just so everybody knows, there's a couple of discrepancies with Rockledge, McClarty Stadium being off-site. Also, the two baseball and softball field at Vieira, they're forced to go to two different locations. They can't even put banners up. They're, yeah, for a while you had it, but Titusville has their own baseball team. I think that they, doesn't Titusville have their own baseball and softball park?
Softball's onsite. Baseball is kind of off-site and around the, behind the, across the street and over the track, so it's not really on campus. We're taking a look at whether we can fit baseball on campus. That's part of something we're evaluating.
And just so that everybody understands, the Tourism Development Council and many other organizations like U-SAA have always worked with us on, if we wanted to collaborate on usage of facilities for costs and everything else. So just wanted to say thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, back to you, Mr. Ramjet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Sue. Now, we will have Mr. Aaron Parr, the head athletic trainer and assistant athletic director at Bayside High School to talk about athletic trainers in the school district.
Awesome. Thank you very much. First of all, again, my name is Aaron Parr, the athletic trainer at Bayside High School. I'm also the assistant athletic director. I'm also head wrestling coach. So, I bring a perspective of multiple hats to this table. And with this information, I've been here in this county since two thousand and five. So, I've been here through a few bits of turmoil up and down. But in two thousand and six, a great man, Tom McIntyre, some of y'all might remember that name, wonderful man, wonderful family, led a big push. There were six of us athletic trainers at the time trying to get this established to get an athletic trainer in every high school. That year, it was highly publicized as, oh, my gosh, Brevard Public Schools has six million dollar budget cuts. Over a few years, there were times where, my gosh, six million, that's not as much as this year. But that's, it was very quickly axed, very quickly taken off the table in two thousand and six. And in two thousand and eight, I, I bring up a kind of a source, we lost a student athlete here in Brevard County on a soccer field up in Cocoa Beach. By no way can I say an athletic trainer or AED would guarantee he would still be here with us, but I can say those chances would be greater, that I can say without a doubt. But moving forward with this, I myself, one person, I'm going to speak to you about what things that I have monitored, what things I have managed. I have managed multiple times, two fractured femurs. A lot of athletic trainers say they never get to experience a fractured femur in their career. This is a life-threatening injury because of the femoral artery. This is life-threatening. Properly management, properly cared, loaded in ambulance with EMTs, and without myself being there at those two instances, who knows? Multiple heat exhaustion, borderline heat strokes, multiple concussions, cervical spine fracture that I've dealt with. And these are just to name a few when I was putting together a list of life and death scenarios that an athletic trainer has had the ability to prevent and liability dollars saved for this county. I've been involved in a court case that I've been on recording, on a recorded interview. I'm not proud to say that, but it eventually, in my understanding, was tossed. Whether that was directly my involvement, but it was involved. Again, I am one person that has been involved with all these things. Currently, the athletic training supplement is eleven thousand dollars. This is eleven thousand dollars for a full-time job. People ask me all the time, why is it difficult to get athletic trainers here? That's the underlying reason. Eleven thousand dollars for a full-time job is unrealistic. There is a full-time need, and we are fully there as a licensed medical professional by the state of Florida. I have to maintain a state license along with a national membership to the National Athletic Training Association to be called an athletic trainer. If we divided out on the current recommendation by National Athletic Training Association, that eleven thousand dollars amounts to three hundred and fourteen hours of work you get from me a year. Let me tell you, that would run out real quick on a varsity boys' basketball game where we have freshman JV boys lasting for about four-thirty PM till about ten PM. And we have twelve, thirteen of those a year. You just took through more than a third of your allotment for that semester. So, doing the numbers is definitely there. Next, currently, we have ten of sixteen schools that are currently covered. And that's a sixty-two point five percent. I would say it's barely passing grade. And I ask, is that good? And the only reason I ask that simply is because I know of one that's already done, that's already will be submitting resignation at the end of this year. They are done, they are burnt out. So, that's going to drop us to fifty-six point two-five percent. Now, you notice a lot of these are labeled as outreach. Outreach means they have allegiance to another company. They come to us on borrowed time. Traditionally, those companies take that eleven thousand dollars and say, all right, BPS, you get this many hours, and they start checking them off. And when those hours run out, coverage runs out. That's traditionally how it's done. I'm going to give some major props to a good friend, Kelly Way, who is in charge of Paris Medical, who covers four high schools currently. She is a rock star, her entire staff are rock stars. I know two other people up here that would agree with this a hundred percent. They do everything they can. But understand, just like in two thousand and six, like I started off on that first slide, Wustoff, for those of you who were around back then, once that return on investment doesn't cover those salaries, what do you think is going to happen to those athletic trainers that are coming from off-site as outreach, outreach athletic trainers? So, I put that in perspective. Talk a little bit more about outreach. Parish, again, they've been trying to hire for over a year an additional. Can't fill it. Can't fill it. Now, whether it's salary, whether it's location, I, I haven't dived into that, to that extreme, but I know Kelly has been telling me, we're trying to hire, we're trying to hire. We want more. We want to provide more coverage, but we can't. Some pros and cons to outreach. Pros, they can provide game coverage. Hundred percent they can, they can protect from liability. Hundred percent agree with that. Some cons, as I've, as I've already explained, they're going to count their hours towards that per diem. Limited access to home location. So, when they're not available, they're working at that clinic, and they cover a game. Limited access there. Access to student athletes, certain days might be restrictive. I'm going to get into that here and just a little bit more. And then, again, hourly wage has gone up by our national board standards to thirty-five an hour. The cost benefit has to be beneficial to them to keep providing that outreach. Lastly, there was a time where I myself decided to step away from athletic training in two thousand and fifteen. We went the route of getting an outreach athletic trainer. We contracted with Three D Orthopedic, again, David Dominguez, great guy. I've known him for a good bit, and I can't say enough praise about him. But the athletic trainer that was provided, there was one day a week never available. Two days a week would never be available till six-thirty. And there are two days that could arrive till five-thirty. Again, just restricted access, not really providing that top-notch service that we want to, not always being available for student athletes after school in that time. Again, they are, they have allegiance to that home site. Twenty sixteen, again, I started the year not as athletic trainer. Our new outreach athletic trainer was only available to cover during game time. Thirty minutes before game time, they would arrive, and immediately after, they'd be walking off property. This isn't sufficient. That's not, I'm staring at it, to serve every student with excellence as a standard, that's not that. We need people there. And I, effective after that first game that year, I effectively resumed role, my role as athletic trainer at Bayside High School. People ask me, what is it we need? Now, this, and I know there was a big debate here before about speaking. I am not trying to create something that's permanent. I'm trying to just say, this is what I recommend with what's out there. I've been asked by numerous people before, and I love the idea about this idea about gathering AEDs to get, working on things together. My one recommendation is, why not add a medical professional to that group of AEDs? You know, the medical professional on the staff of the high, high school is actually the highest paid supplement of anyone there. Why not have them represented in that small group? To me, that just makes sense. But I would say definitely, one athletic trainer at every single high school, that's a minimum. Guys, our neighbors around us have two or three at most schools. Two or three. This decreases that burnout that happens. An amazing athletic trainer, Palm Bay High School, now no longer practices because the expectation is just so unreal. They now just school teacher, that's it. It's just not worth it for that eleven thousand dollars. It's not worth it. Athletic training now requires a master's degree. You're not allowed to even earn the certificate without, since two thousand and twenty. If you graduate after two thousand and twenty, you're required to have a master's degree. So, this bumped those numbers up, to be honest. Continuing education funds is a norm to go along with the job of an athletic trainer. Prior to here, my previous job in Tennessee, actually, I had a budget of twenty-five hundred dollars continuing education. That was separate to where if I didn't use it, they kept it, that's fine. But that's how it was managing, that's how that was done. You could either choose to involve that with salary or not. Being on a campus during lunchtime is key in my mind. Access to student athletes during lunchtime potentially, and also, you know, my principal loves the fact I occasionally get out there and help provide supervision. She's very appreciative here at Bayside High School, or there at Bayside High School, I should say. Yo' callie Xander, by the way. But yes, if recommendation would be simply be there during lunchtime through the end of all activities, every day, whether it's practice, competition, it's going to average out to that traditional forty-five, forty-hour work week. It's going to average out to the same work week of a full-time professional. So, instead of me being a high school teacher by day, full high school teacher, then transitioning to a full-time athletic trainer by afternoon and night and not having any life at all, I mean, it treats it more of a respected professional as a healthcare professional providing a medical practice. And again, please check with your neighboring counties. They all have these, and in multiple per every high school. Ultimately, my recommendation would be around, right, in the low fifties. And I say this because there are programs out there, there's legislation out there that if you are at certain levels and you're at a college, you can be working one sport in a college. You're guaranteed over forty-eight thousand dollars plus continuing education units. So, how are we competitive offering eleven thousand dollars to somebody to come and work for us here in Brevard County for the same job? That's my only question, and that's my recommendation. Again, I definitely, I would volunteer myself if I would be potential to add to that group of AEDs as a medical professional, but that, that's again, that's not for my decision to be made, but that concludes my portion.
And I wanted to say, as a former coach at Space Coast, worked very closely with one of the athletic trainers there. And there's so much more besides administering the injuries. There's the prep work, there's the, before every sport, they're taping every kid. Before, after a kid's injured, they're the ones that go on the, on the cart, on the ambulances to go make sure they're okay. They're the ones that are following up. And just to say that you don't have that at a school, think about that. Those schools, how many did you say that don't have it?
As of right now, at this moment, there's actually six that don't have it, and I can tell you there's one more.
So, six schools have nobody there to administer. And what happens is, is if they play them, then they end up administering for both sides. And if they're lucky, now, can you imagine two schools playing each other with no athletic trainers? And we, we almost got very close about four years ago with this to get it taken care of in the budget, and we just missed it. So, it's something that's been coming up. I really appreciate your time, Aaron. Thank you so much for coming. Mr. Ramjet, you have the next up?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Next up, we will be talking about heart screenings, Mr. Evan Ernst and Dr. Sean Sima from Who We Play For.
Well, thank you guys for a few minutes. We prepared a bit of a slide deck. I say, slip the, skip the slide deck, and then I'll, I'll cover a few things, I hand it to Sean. But it's an honor to talk with the school board again. It's been a few years I've been back. Love these athletic trainers, love these athletic directors that really bought into this vision the last ten years and the, and the first school board in America to make this a standard of care. Huge thank you to Dr. Schiller, who we met with last week, and we're excited to continue to work with. He knows more of the particulars on this. Our hope over the next couple of years is to advance the standard of care for more than just student athletes, eventually for sixth graders, eventually for marching band, ROTC, et cetera, et cetera. We've done these things so far in other school districts like Orange County, like Leon County. There's a lot of great data to support it. Some of the highlights, actually, we'll start with a story, then I'll hit some of the highlights of the last ten years. A bunch of kids born and raised in Brevard County. I went to Capeview, Gardendale, Roosevelt, Cocoa Beach, and that's the story of every kid on Who We Play For. Watched her teammate die at Cocoa Beach High School, a story you all know and all lived from a detectable heart condition after a lifetime's worth of sports physicals. From at that point, the president of the Academy of Pediatrics of Florida, Dr. Cosgrove. Not her fault in any way. It's a blind spot in medicine the last fifty years, and it's a standard of care for certain levels of athletics. As you guys know, big, great schools like Florida State, professional sports, other countries like Italy where ECG screenings given to every student athlete every year since nineteen eighty-two. As you may remember, in countries like Italy, they reduce sudden cardiac death by near ninety percent. In countries like America, we've reduced it by nearly zero percent since the eighties. So, what is Who We Play For done about this? Rafe Macros, ashes are buried in Cocoa Beach High School soccer field, a bunch of best friends at a community, in groups like Health First and Parish, and so many more across this county. Ten years later, have raised millions of dollars to support Brevard Public Schools, student athletes, and all students. We've donated hundreds of AEDs. We've screened over fifty thousand student athletes and students in Brevard County. We have had at least four initiatives that started here that made their way to the national stage. In the history of Brevard County medicine, and I'm certainly not the expert on that, and I challenge anyone to tell me if this has ever happened, I'm not sure how many times pediatric care has been presented at the American Academy of Pediatrics. During COVID, on a virtual stage, UCF's College of Medicine presented on Brevard County, and they celebrated the first large school district in the United States to require this standard of care. They highlighted the kids that get to grow up from that leadership and from that policy, and they challenged school districts across the country to follow. What's the state of the union in Florida? Thirty percent of Florida has this requirement. This FHSAA's leadership is excited and ready to roll this out, one district at a time until Florida's the first state. And mixed in that journey, we got to hit the Good Morning America circuit for a minute and a half. Three kids who were saved in central Florida got to share their stories. We've been able to work some laws that started here in Brevard County to the state level and then the national level. Now, let Sean hit it on that. Through that process, we've been able to include people like Damar Hamlin, people like Russell Westbrook from the Lakers, who buried his best friend the same way we did. And the story goes on and on. So, from my perspective and from our team and the Who We Play For family to you guys, this is impossible without the leadership of the school board, without the buy-in of principals and athletic directors. And we really have become a national lighthouse for SCA prevention. And it's an honor of a lifetime to be a part of that with you.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, real quick. I'm looking at the three-minute clock, don't turn it on. But yeah, I just echo what Evan said. In May of two thousand and seventeen, me and my daughter stood right there. In case you don't know, my daughter survived sudden cardiac arrest. She was a Viera High School student. Left a Viera softball game, went for a run on a treadmill one night to get ready for tryouts for cheer, and within thirty seconds, she was collapsed dead on the ground. That night, there was a guy running behind her who had just taken CPR. He wasn't a medical guy, but he saved my daughter's life. The AED on the wall, the battery and pads have been expired for, we don't even know, but for whatever reason, the guy that owned the gym saw that the light wasn't blinking, and he realized, and he fixed the battery and pads about three weeks before my daughter collapsed. You know, if you've never been in the position to see your kid in a state of, is she going to make it? A lot of people ask me, like, why do you do this? Your kid survived, like, why are you fighting? Like, we hear it all the time, right? My daughter is one out of ten. Nine out of ten die from what my daughter survived. And people ask, why do you do this? Well, I am a medical provider, but I made a lot of deals with God on February second of two thousand and sixteen. And if you've never been where you don't know if your kid is going to make it, you don't know honestly what it, what it feels like to really want something. And God answered, we're the one out of ten. And I stood over there with my daughter who was alive. My daughter was a unicorn because people don't survive. But my kid survives. And I'm not talking some deadly form of cancer. My child was saved by bystanders who weren't medical. And we started here six years ago, I want to say now. And like Evan said, a movement has started in Brevard County because of the school board. We stood in front of the school board, and you guys took a chance. And, and as Evan said, we've passed several laws. We passed a law, believe it or not, before two years ago, our kids could be out on a football field or out running stadiums in the summer, and there didn't have to be an AED anywhere by. We didn't have to have a coach that knew CPR. The only place that you had to have an AED and CPR was at a FHSA playoff game or championship game. And then, we passed the most lifesaving law in the history of our state. The number-one cause of death in the state of Florida is cardiac. Now, no kid can graduate high school in our state without getting an introductory course of hands-only CPR in ninth and eleventh grade. That's like eight hundred thousand lifesavers every single year who are going to hit the street. And of course, can't go any further than saying what, what happened here with, with the, you know, the heart screening program. The first county in the country to take that step. And that is release the beast, if you will. All over the country now, we have counties- And that is release the beast, if you will. All over the country now, we have counties and school boards that are following you all. I know for certain, at least 130 kids have been saved in our state since 2019. They passed every physical that people like me do that is really not doing anything to protect our kids from dying. And that started right here. And I just want to thank you all. I'm in a lot of schools. One of the things I do in Brevard County is I'll go to certain schools. And I teach the hands-only CPR course. And I hear over and over and over of stories of kids who have used it to save somebody. On those campuses, I know there's a struggle. Not every campus has enough AEDs. Not every campus has a cardiac emergency response plan. And I'm gonna finish up, but the number one cause of death at school is sudden cardiac arrest. The leading cause of death in our athletes is sudden cardiac arrest. And in our county, we expect a coach to know exactly what to do when a guy hits the floor and he's seizing or he's agonal breathing. And we don't do one practice drill to help them. And then we want to put them in the newspaper and say, well, why, why didn't this coach react the right way? We really need to take that a little bit more serious. Devise a plan. It's free. There's no cost to it, but we have to be ready. We're ready in Brevard County. I, I would venture to say we're probably the most safe county in the country with all the things that we have. But we need to take that next step. And I look forward to working with you all in any way. It's the reason I live. And I truly mean that. And I'll go ahead and shut up because I know my three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I really appreciate it. I think what I'm hearing is, is you had come forward and said a couple of things and you had two. But what I think would help is if we could set a time for you to meet with Dr. Schiller and put together, if you haven't already, a list of those needs so that he can bring that forward on the 28th. So that's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Ramjet?
Keeping it moving, we have Steve Muzzi of the Midcoast Officials Association, also known as the MCOA, who will be talking about officials in the school district.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ramzie. Mr. Parr, will you help me with the slides? First, I, you know, regret that you guys are just getting this information today. I really want you to know and learn about this Midcoast Officials Association that's been in our county for over 55 years. And want you to kind of know how an important role that we play in supportive athletics in Brevard County. So very quickly, we wanted to touch on our background. Talk about the objectives. I call this a partnership. You can see on the cover slide there, we show the Brevard Public Schools Midcoast Officials Association and Cape Coast Conference. We are a partnership. So I want to talk a little bit about the makeup of our organization. Some barriers that are impacting our ability to provide game officials to support athletics. I did have two 30-second clips, which I think are outstanding, that the National Federation of High Schools generated. I don't know if the, if those links will work. And real quick, we do have like summary of these partnership recommendations that I certainly hope we can provide some input, I think, as an important stakeholder to the athletic task force that Dr. Schiller is in, is working on. Okay, so what we are, we're the Midcoast Officials Association. We've partnered with Brevard Schools now for over 55 years. It's a partnership that we are, that we are just tremendously honored to be a part of. And we've always strived to be first in Florida. I mean, and that means following all the Florida High School Athletic Association rules, guidelines, recommendations. To ensure our athletes are able to compete at the highest levels in pursuit of their individual goals. I put recommendations because one of the points of contention that you make here is, hey, let's cut crew sizes so we can cut the cost of athletic officials, okay? Let's just go with what the minimum is rec, let's not go with the recommended. Since the entire partnership, Brevard Public Schools has never done that. We've always gone with the recommendation. We are a one-stop shop. We're different than most of the Florida high school sanctioned associations in the state. We provide, our district are basically one-stop shop. And you can see the sports that we provide services for. Football, girls and boys basketball, boys soccer, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, volleyball, softball, baseball and wrestling. Each sport is led by a commissioner. This year, I had boys lacrosse in red. We actually did not have that in contract. We had a association that was unable to provide services. And last year, when they did provide services, they really asked for, they really, we had to consolidate game schedules. They didn't have the officials. We, we really scrambled hard, recruited, recruited officials in partnership with Friends of Brevard Lacrosse. Haven't heard of any issues, but we've been able to provide those services and I, I hope that's worked out for you, Dr. Ramjet. I did want to plug, do a plug to Judge Charlie Crawford. I don't know, you know, he's part of Friends of Brevard Lacrosse. What an unbelievable community member. And it's just an example of inter-agency and partnerships. Just so you guys know, all of our officials, they're basically, it's an avocation. They're based in Brevard. We're nonprofit. We've been, we've been a sanct, the only FHSA sanctioned officials association since our inception. We're focused on interscholastic sports content, uh, sports contests. And the one thing that's important is for you guys, and you guys, so much on your plate. But just to kind of understand the climate that we're facing, that's creating really tough challenges nationally and locally. Really, it ties into societal items, discipline, other things. We have a contract. We always have a multi-year contract with you guys. It expires in June. The one thing I want you to know, our main focus is to provide high-quality game officials in support of what I've put expanded athletic opportunities for student athletes. Athletics provides, it's such a great service that you're providing to students. I love the idea that you're looking to expand in middle school and also potentially looking at elementary school. But just so you guys know, some of the challenges, basically I've summarized it into three categories. Aging demographics, there's like people like me. I mean, if you look at all the sports, they're older people, okay? And so we're trying to improve that. Perceptions of safety. Over 50% of officials have feared for their safety because of administrator, coach, player, spectator behavior. I will tell you that most of the time, this is spectator behavior in these contests. There's a lot of things that Brevard does great, but we have our share of issues. Sportsmanship, the large majority of people feel like sportsmanship is declining. It's not getting better. I know we can do better. We want to be a part of that. Here's what our officials associate. These are people in, in your community, okay? We have, right now, this is October, so there's more. We have 419 officials. 209, 419 registrations. We have 200, we have 293 people as of October. That's actually been declining. But one of the stats that just blows me away, and it makes a lot of sense, is that 42% of our officials are veterans. Okay, they're veterans and they are serving their community and they're passionate about it. And you can see the average age. Wrestling is the youngest age group. Softball is the oldest. And then our demographics, you can see that 66% of our officials are greater than 50 years old. So we are working hard. I've got some recommendations that I really hope you guys consider that will benefit people and help us continue to provide services to officials. So locally, our big issues are recruitment and retention of officials for all of the reasons that I have written down there. And it, it just ranges from lack of sportsmanship, respect, and just baseline requirements, the point of entry for people to, you know, they have to purchase uniforms. They have to register with the FHSA, with the MCOA. We have, they have to go through background checks, rule tests, mandatory training, meeting requirements, all of that. It's very difficult to attract younger people for that, but we are making some end runs. We need your help. I'll give you some great examples in a moment. Increased expectations. We are often the, the calm in these, in these contests. That we have to exhibit management skills to keep games from, from spiraling into rough play, fighting and injuries. I can't tell you how many things that our officials in our contests prevent for our student athletes, for our coaches. Rising costs. MCOA officials, I just want you guys to know that, that your schools took a hit in the 2020-21. Their costs went up. And this was all based on the FHSA recommendations. There, there hadn't been raises in over 15 years. And they were just trying to bring it up, but I think it was tough for the schools. But we, we managed, we got through it. And one thing I do need to make a plug, we did not cancel one game because of COVID, okay? Not one game was canceled because of the lack of a sports official. These people are very dedicated. They come from all walks of life. I just wish you could get to know some of them and meet them. Main thing, the challenges that we need assistance with. I'd love for you to see the bench bad behavior, but I feel like I, I'm gonna ask that you guys look at that link and you're, please promise me you'll do that. It's, it's just, it's important. But there are, just bottom line is behavior and sportsmanship, okay? Behavior and sportsmanship, trying to recognize officials and then payment of officials, cost of officiating. I've listed three. We have a contract that we certainly hope we can get before the board. That I know that we've been obviously willing to make some concessions on some things that are financial, but there's some things we, we just can't. But I think that you'll find that we will be the best deal in town. One of the biggest issues that we have is paying our officials. If you did a process management analysis of the payment process to officials here, you would see a lot of opportunities for improvement and we really need a timely streamlined payment process. Many districts, what, what we'd like to see is athletic directors submit a schedule. We invoice, the school district pays the MCOA and then allows for some type of internal reimbursement as funds become available and as the seasons progress. We have situations where we can't pay officials. We don't take any money for our officials. This, I'm like a volunteer. We don't, and, and we provide a lot of services for the school district. I've put a couple of things in here.
Muzzi, hang on just a second because this is, when I met with all of you guys, this was one of the biggest components that you guys had. So just so everybody understands, when they go to pay the officials, the officials will go and they will literally go do the game, cover it and then not get paid in some of the day. Give me some of those days that they had not gotten paid for.
We've gone four months. We've gone four months. I've got a school district, Treasure Coast. They, they go, hey, who do we talk to? We've done a bunch of games. We haven't got paid. So I'm gonna, but there's, we've looked at this. It's an easy problem. And, and it's created consternation across our athletic directors and us. We could be focused on different things.
So, so what is, what's happening? And sorry, Muzzi. Muzzi lives in my neighborhood, so like he comes down the, the neighborhood and talks to me all the time about this. But the thing is, is this, is that he, if you can't pay the refs, then they're not gonna stay there, right? And it's a very easy internal fix that we can do. And Muzzi, if you could meet with Dr. Schiller and give your contact information so you could explain that process to him.
Yes, sir. And I will say, as cumbersome as the process is, I was speaking to our treasurer. We got such good people. I mean, they've worked so hard. I mean, we've been able to get paid and we tell them, like, I'll tell them, look, don't pay me. I'll work, you don't pay people who need it, you know, but, but people are working very hard. We, you know, you know, if we can get payments even within 50, 45 days of invoices, right now, we consider that good. But we need to do better. We can do better. But there's three things I just wanted to focus on in terms of where we need. You have the financial issue, but this recruitment, I really look at three tracks. And this is really helpful for students for, for, okay, stu, we have a student program. Right now, we have two students from Viera and O'Gally High School. We can recruit students to be student officials. It is a gift for those students. We provide them mentoring. When they go off to college or wherever they go, they can help this. And, and we have had some great success with that on a small scale. We want to look at that. We also want to target former coaches and former players. If you've been involved in sports and you get, and you lose that and you're in your mid-20s, you have a hole in your heart, okay? You love the game, but you miss it. This is an opportunity for them to get involved. We've got, right now, we've got three young ladies that I can think of. One is from Astra High School, Akiana Joyner. Her name's Kiki Joyner. Jessica Connors from Rockledge High School. And Viana, I can't remember Viana's last name. But we're beginning to see pockets of success because we're working very hard. These young ladies have such talent. They have an opportunity to make this more than an avocation. The NBA, they're not WNBA, the NBA is loaded with officials. And, and they have said, thank you so much. They've been able to stay involved in the game. We need, that's where I want to be focusing our time with, okay? It's self fulfilling. The other thing is BPS staff. Target outreach, we already have, Dr. Sullivan has already given us improvement, you know, approval for her husband to become an official. He's a very successful basketball coach. I've been on the, I've, I've been on the bad side of receiving Mike's.
He's the most successful in the county.
Yeah, he's been, and I'm just joking, you know, but he's a very intense basketball guy. But there's something missing. But I'll tell you, I want to give you a couple of other examples. You got a principal who's a football, Scott Corso. You've got a gentleman named Stephen Link, who's a, you've got Carla. We've got some success stories. But there's former coaches, former players, they can get back involved.
So I think, I think if you met with Dr. Schiller on that, you'd be able to communicate a package that goes out to them to let them know.
Yeah. And, and the recent, what it is, it's a former coach talks to a former player. That has the most impact. And those kids, there's a lot of these people, they have a whole, they want to be a part. They want it. So I've already told the state, by the way, regarding this bench behavior, that Brevard County, okay? We're gonna be a leader in that, okay?
Yeah, the other piece that you had mentioned is discipline. And you had mentioned that sometimes we have situations. There was a couple of instances recently over at some of the games over at Viera where we had some of these other teams come in from out of. I would love to have you, as Dr. Schiller moves forward with a disciplined team, there's like a bigger discipline thing that he's gonna announce later on today. I would love you to be a part of that because I think one of the components we're not talking about is the athletic competitions. You know what I mean?
Yes, sir. And anything that we can do, Dr. Schiller, we are a resource for you guys. I, I just want to tell you, we are a resource. The one thing, again, research, what we, in terms of, we need help with recruitment. And we want our, we want to be younger, we want to be more athletic. And there's such opportunity for kids, employees and former folks to get involved in this community. So that's, I'm sorry, it's just super important and there's great opportunities. The next, the last thing that I'm gonna say is retention. Because we lose them first, second, third year. So there's a lot of, and it's because of bad behavior. And that's why I want you to look at that 30-second clip.
I think if you, if you give us that opportunity, we can do that. I appreciate it, Mr. Muzzi.
So I'll just leave it at that. We just need, we need to be a partner. We look forward to working with you guys. The operational thing, there's some things we can do with technology. I see Mr. Cheedens there. There's some exciting things in terms of software integration, things like that, and we want to be a part of that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Ramjet, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, sir. So I'm gonna skip over the title nine and athletics and my individual recommendations. I want to say just very quickly that, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you all and to present this information. Please feel free to look through the, the slides, what I have there and thank you very much.
If you guys, a lot of stuff was said here today. If you guys can put that together, email that to the board members or email that to Dr. Schiller. He'll get it to us. We appreciate it because I think that there's some components that you guys have that I'm glad you guys presented on today. And I think that we'll be able to bring it forward. But basically, one of the issues we have with discipline that we can help is having those students have teachers that are inside the schools be the coaches and expand the opportunities for them. So thank you so much, you guys. I really appreciate it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just wanted, I just want to thank you all for all of your doing for this community. I've enjoyed talking with two of you folks earlier in the week, I think it was, or I don't even know when that was. And we talked about how we can go bigger and beyond athletics to make sure all of our children have opportunities to improve health. And that is one of the things that I think we've talked about, that you'll chat about later about. things that I think we've talked about, that you'll chat about later, about how do we provide as many resources of support for mental and emotional as well as physical, and I'll leave that to you. I would offer, because I had in the past life to officiate, problem is, it would not help the youth element, nor the athleticism any longer.
Hey, we'll take, just like we'll take Coach Sullivan.
Hey, guys, thank you very much.
Is that Stephanie you're talking about?
Did you have something to say?
Sorry. Oh, I thought it was Stephanie who was going to officiate as well.
Maybe.
Maybe, thank you, gentlemen.
I'm going to add my thanks to you all for being here, and I apologize that you kind of got stuck in some process and procedure drama, because that's what it was, it's not about the importance of the work that you do, because, you know, you guys, I was proud to be on the board that made that decision, I still wear my red heart shirt proudly, it's soft and comfortable too, but I like to wear that one, you know, to show what we did as a board a few years ago. Thank you for the work you do. Obviously, some of the issues that have been brought up are things that come to the board, some of them have to be bargained, and some of them have to be negotiated by our wonderful procurement department, and those things that, you know, not necessarily going to come straight to the board, but our staff will work on those, and I know Dr. Schiller has the plan, so I look forward to seeing the comprehensive presentation in a few weeks, so thank you guys for your time, appreciate that.
Can I tag on there? I want to say thank you to everyone as well, and Mr. Seema, a particular thank you for sharing your story about your daughter, I knew the origin story of who we play for and some of the wonderful miracles that you've identified, I actually know somebody personally who identified something, so it's a little personal for me, so thank you for that. And just, you know, just to bring a little light into the room, Mr. Ernst, is it true that you like mended her heart and married that girl? It's such a sweet story, but thank you again for sharing that, because it's clear as day that that still impacts you so deeply today and drives you for what you do and you continue to do, and I respect that, and I appreciate you very much.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real fast, we can move through some of these to get, to get taken care of, the first one is, is, the next topic that we had is volunteers, what we did was we identified the fact that there is no volunteer coordinator at the school district, I did not know that until recently, I thought that there was somebody that was at least organized to go out and recruit and all that stuff, so what I did was, I said, hey, on the heels of us meeting with, at the zoo where we talked about wanting to try to enhance our volunteers, Tammy and I were able to get the contact for Health First's volunteers and the contact for the zoo's volunteers, identified some of the issues, and we're in the process of letting Dr. Schiller take those, so that he can meet with them, come up with a game plan with communications and everybody like that, and bring it back to us. But to say one of our things that we have an issue with is volunteers, that's something that we can fix and we can move forward with, so if anybody doesn't have any other conversations, we can just move past that one, we're good, all right? The clubs that we were going to have, had Andrew speak in real quick on it, but I think for time purposes, if we're okay to hold on speaking about the clubs and stuff like that, what I would just say is, is that we've seen a decline in the club membership because we don't have teachers that are being worn out, fill them. If we're able to increase the volunteers, we'll be able to increase the opportunities, does that make sense? There's a longer presentation on it, but that'll be good, did you have anything to say?
Well, I think we have to, there's part of our policy talks about if you have clubs, you have to have a staff sponsor, so even if you have volunteers, you still have to have a staff sponsor.
Yep, but a lot of times those volunteers can offset, so we're good on that? If you guys wanted to, there's, if I could, I know you wanted to go over the organizational vision, but I'd like to just touch on those other three, that way you can have the rest of the time to go over it. When I was looking at the Neola packages that we had, so I'm skipping the values, beliefs, just so that we can give the rest of the time, one of the issues that we have is that the Neola statutes are different than probably about a quarter to a third of our actual policies, right? So I would say, I would say, so many of you know that, like Ms. Campbell, you had mentioned, what's the urgency and stuff like that, one of the problems we have is, is that many of our policies are not up to date with Neola and statute and stuff like that, so we're trying to get moving, and every time we start moving, we come up with another layer, right? So we, I asked Paul, and Paul, thank you for getting the Neola copies of each one of the district, of each one of our policies, is there, Paul, and I apologize about not asking you ahead of times, we had asked for a login for school board members for board docs, was there an opportunity to take a look at that yet?
I reached out to Neola, I've not heard back if they have anything like that.
It would be board docs, I'm sorry, it's not Neola, it would be board docs, the company board docs, so we can search other statutes or other, other policies.
You had said that was through Neola, so I reached out to them, asking if they have that ability to let us see their stuff, so I don't know.
No, it'll be board docs, I'm sorry about that, so if we can do that. So anyways, if we wanted to, we could move forward with some of these today, I think that we want to do the organizational vision and value, but what I would like to do is, is talk about, because there are so many changes in zero ones and twos now with the Neola updates and everything, about a process, because the idea is, is that we would take the Neola copy, update it, right, and then amend into it, does that make sense to you? And the issue we had was, is that we were talking about taking each one of these and saying, okay, well, you need to add this, but then when we add Neola, then what we end up doing is now we've updated that policy, and then do we pick up and put it on top, or do we amend the Neola policy? That's all, so I wanted to talk about that as a process, and then see where you guys were at. What I would like to do, which is the last component, which is talk about adding some work session and time discussion dates to do with these along with some of the other items, so the first step is, if we could talk real quick about these actual policies and how you would like to proceed on attacking them, and then move to some of these work dates, and then give the last to the organization vision and values, if that's okay, is that okay?
So when we talk about how we use Neola, I think we need to just talk about how we use Neola, what, Neola is a recommendation, they make sure, you know, they give the recommendations, they're going to be aligned with statute, but Neola is also just a guide, our policies do not have to match with Neola, and when you say whatever percentage of our policies don't match, well, they don't have to match, Neola gives us options, a lot of the, a lot of those bylaws and those first and the zero policies, it's, it's not really something that has to be changed, there are certain things, yeah, I think we've, you know, we've been going through notes, but we, our policy does not have to match Neola, in fact, frequently, you know, it doesn't because of the choice of the board, for example, the policy we worked on today, 2521, the instructional materials, none of that book challenge process is in there, we came up with the framework of that early in my first year on the board, we revised it sometime in the last couple of years, and then we've just revised it again and then again, that, none of that you'll find in Neola, so again, it's just a guide, kind of a bare, bare minimum, and Neola gives options, option one, option two, when it is up to the board, but we don't have to match, so I don't know that there's necessarily a benefit, just, just me personally, as I've been going through them, been making some notes here and there, we might want to make this change, but I don't think we have to change every single one, or that is different from Neola, we can just check it off, we looked at it, because some of them are just really pretty plain and boring and bare bones.
A lot of them, Ms. Campbell, you're 100% right, a lot of them are still in line, like if you look through the first couple, the name, the all those things, they're all the same, but there are a lot of them that, when I started looking through, that the statute has been updated to the specific area, and we have not updated that, and then we have a Neola piece that's a little bit different, so I had a suggestion, but I was going to wait until everybody else had something to say.
That's one of the things that I've discovered, and I'm going through all these, and honestly, this has been extremely helpful for me as a new board member, and I'm really glad that we're doing this, but there are several things, as I'm comparing Florida statute, where I'm seeing, oh, it's missing a word, some things have been updated or changed, and, and I don't know, if we run the policy through Neola, will Neola catch that, will they know what the Florida statute is, or no, I mean, is that?
They have their templates, and any changes we, we redline in there, but we, they don't check ours against their language, because we can change it from their language.
But, let me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They don't check the, they don't check the Florida statute, is what you're saying? So that would be odd.
Their templates, they guarantee are in accordance with Florida statute and federal law, so they guarantee theirs, if we make changes to them, they do not check that, they do not warrant those changes.
Okay, got you.
So basically, Neola is the most up to date on the, on the statute, right? So the argument would be, do we take the Neola one and the other one side by side, so that we can view them and then make those decisions, or, I wanted to hear from you guys, because I had a couple of ideas, anybody?
Give those options again.
So basically, we can, what we can do is, Neola is the most up to date with statute, right?
You have to go back that far, but you said we can do that.
I understand, but the thing is, is that we have many of our policies that need to be updated, right? We know that, so the idea is, is that we would overlay the Neola policies on top, which we know are specific to statute, and then if we want to add any of them to that policy change, we can do that, does that make sense? You basically take and adopt the new Neola piece and then add to it, does that make sense?
I think we have to both, I mean, I don't know that we have to, so you're recommending that we take the Neola policy as this is what we're going to do, and we work from it there, I, I just think there's going to be some that we're going to look at Neola, we're going to look at ours and go, not worth making the change, not worth going through the process, ours is good enough, check, move on, and we don't have to go through the whole process, because some of them are more important, in the meantime, staff is, just so we know, staff is going to be continuing in our normal policy approval and revision process, they're going to continue to be bringing policies to us like they already have been, and I know they've already mentioned, last week, I think, I can't remember who it was, somebody said, this one's coming to you, this one's coming to you, so staff's already working on that, so, you know, I don't know that we have to just replace them all, let's just look at it, and this is, this is part of what we were supposed to do between last time and this time, and I took the time, you know, and.
I did too.
So if we're not all ready to do it, then.
The, the issue is, is that we just got all of the policy updates from Neola, so if you guys looked at Neola, looked at the statutes, looked at the old one, want to make the recommendations, then that's great, we can do that, and normally, what would really help is, is when we're doing those, that we would put those notes into the system that we have, so that staff would be ready to answer any questions as we got further past our board docs, does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I really feel like we need to have a work session that's specific to just policy, because I'm like, this keeps on happening, where we're like, it keeps falling to the bottom.
Right, which is where, where I'm going to, yep.
So I, I would love to see us move towards just having nothing other than that.
Which is what I was going to get to, is, is that right now, there is, my notes already, right, what I would like to do is, is bring up some of the topics and say, look, there's a big need to add a couple of meetings, and if we can look at our calendars, and then we can take some of those times and block out four hours for the zeros, four hours for the ones, and go through them, does that make sense? Good, so if we can do that, what happened is, is Dr. Schiller, did you want to speak to the next piece, or did you want me to? So Dr. Schiller and I, as we had before, sat down yesterday for about, what was it, about two and a half hours, really worked through some of the topics that you guys had brought forward at the zoo and other issues, and found out that there's a lot of topics that we want to cover, redistricting's coming, we need the policy reviews of all of our policies, we have to pass the budget, we have collective bargaining, we want to put together the ALCs, the discipline, we have student data and achievement, there's some stuff that Dr. Schiller has found that he'd like to present on, so that we can focus our energies on that, we have strategic directions in student attraction, remember the whole conversation that we were talking about before, where we want those 3,000 kids from homeschool back, and with HB1 coming, that's a massive thing that we are going to have to be ready for, and the image and attraction campaign with Mr. Brune from Communications, CTE alignment plan, recruitment, how are we recruiting our current people, mental health, all of these are topics that we had identified that we needed to bring forward, Dr. Schiller had said, let's put them together in an order, and he's going to place that over the next couple of months, but what we need to do is, in order to achieve these, to have staff bring theirs forward, and for us to move, we needed a couple of extra dates, so I was going to propose that if you guys, we have the odd Tuesdays that we don't meet on, okay? One of the easiest things we can do is just say, the Tuesdays that we have between now and May, we will meet, we have at least four of them, and we would meet just from eight to four and go home. We could also take the Tuesdays that we have and extend them from nine in the morning till the evening, we also can pick up what we used to have, which is Thursdays, we used to have two Thursdays a month, that the school board would have for workshops, and then we would have kind of what we have today, which is like a one o'clock to four o'clock workshop, and then a board meeting, so dynamically, I asked, the easiest thing is to say, look, Tuesdays are board days, right, and add those, but I wanted to hear from you guys, your feelings, we have a minimum of four, according to Dr. Schiller and I, over the process, these processes, so if we can identify four days, put them on the Tuesdays, that's great, if not, we can move from there, so, does anybody have any conflicts on some of these? Go ahead, what do you got?
Yeah, no, I've got some conflicts, maybe it would be better, rather than us hashing out calendars right now in this crucial time, if Tammy can do the poll.
She hates that.
Because, and, and everybody put the dates in, because, you know, and just, just remind us, in the month of April, we have our two regular board meeting days, and the other two Tuesdays are already booked for our superintendent search, so, you know, I'm certainly willing to put the time, here's the thing, that, what I would like for us to prioritize is the things that we want to make sure we handle while Dr. Schiller's here, before we get the new, next superintendent, but I'm going to say this too, if we want to focus on these very, very important things, I think we probably need to slow down with some of the requests we're making of staff outside of these things, because every time one of us makes a request, which we have every right to ask for information, but when we start making requests, it's going to cause staff to go off task, to go, are you listening?
No, I'm listening.
Okay. Take hours, I think one of the requests that was presented to us, we were told that it took staff 30 hours to put information together, okay, between all the people who had to put hands on it, so we need to slow down on some of that, if we're going to ask them, also, the same people are going to be putting all these things to present to us, we've got some really, really important issues that need to get across, and so I think it would be good for us, I'm, like I said, willing to put the time in, I, because we, I think these organizational vision, values and beliefs are very important, and Dr. Schiller's been trying to get us to do this since January, and we haven't done it yet, I don't want to spend the next 15 minutes or more trying to figure out calendar when our administrative assistant can do it.
We were asked to bring our calendars, can we check to see if we have any, and, thank you, Ms. Campbell, if we can check our calendars real quick to see what's available, we can get this thing taken care of now, I appreciate it, we have the 20, so one of the Tuesdays that we could add is the 21st, we're already coming in on the 22nd, that Wednesday, for, I think it's the audit committee.
I can't, I'm shot.
On the 21st, okay, so the 23rd, which is my birthday, we have that Thursday that we could add, anybody?
I'm not, I'm not understanding why we're not doing this off in a doodle poll, it's a lot easier, we can all go sit down.
Because, because we can, we can just take a second and get it taken care of.
It's not that simple though, Mr. Susan, some of us have families that we have to consider, and people watching their children as well, so if we could just do it at home on a doodle poll, have it done within the next couple of days, it'll be easy.
We asked to just bring our calendars, that's why I was asking for us to look at it, that's all.
So I guess we're not talking about organizational vision, values and beliefs Saturday?
We'll get to it.
We've got 10 minutes.
Well, we've rolled everything.
It took 10 minutes, it's a long, we have to talk about it anyway, so that's fine.
So you guys, so how about the 23rd, is the 23rd okay?
I have a board meeting for the Children's Hunger Project regularly on that Thursday, but I could get here after that.
Because that starts at 11 and it's over at like 1:00.
No, it starts at 8.
Okay, so we've got the 23rd as an option, 30th of March?
30th of, I mean, I'm set up.
Good.
I am not available on the 23rd.
Okay, here's the other thing.
Destination Mars is happening, I've already volunteered, I've canceled for other things that have popped up in surprise meetings that we've assigned, canceling all the other things.
Well, the other, the other thing is, well, this is, so the other thing.
That also means they're going to be here, I mean, we can find a room, but there's kids on the road.
Yeah, there's that whole issue that I'm dealing with, the other thing is, is that just so you know, the workshops are not giving direction, they are just saying, this is what we'd like for it to come back, right? So there's no, you can, literally, as long as we have a quorum, people can be offsite and call in, so it's not the end of the world, so what about the 30th, you guys?
I can do the 30th.
Okay, what about 4/13, April 13th?
I should be okay then.
We good?
And now I'm going to Pinellas for a tour of their career center that way.
Okay.
I have a genuine question here.
Hang on, hang on, let me just get through this.
No, no, I have a question here, this pertains to the calendar.
Okay, but can we, can.
No, Mr. Susan.
I'm in the process of getting these things, just hang on.
I understand, but there's, I have a genuine question here.
Go ahead.
If these are priorities, then why are we not just having them on our regularly scheduled workshop days?
Because we don't have enough time.
Mr. Susan.
You asked me a question.
It doesn't make sense to me, and if we're not prioritizing which ones are going to go first and last, how are we genuinely figuring out when we're going to place them? This is why we constantly keep having these workshops, and we run out of time, because we just slap things on an agenda without any, without any plan.
Okay.
We waste so much time.
Okay, so Dr. Schiller and I planned out the next set of workshops. So Dr. Schiller and I planned out the next set of workshops. And based on those, we needed an extra four days to add to those days. So those are already set up for some of it. That's the reason we're requesting. So what about, did I say the April 13th? You said you're out, April 20th?
Wes Shore, Wes Shore is senior project judging and we've all been invited. And I know I'm already invited.
All right, April 27th?
We will be interviewing superintendent candidates.
Okay. So if we go.
Does it have to be those, the Thursday?
So you know what, honestly? Then we can open up Wednesdays if we need to, too. So why don't I request, at this point, since we are running close to time, I'll ask her to put up a doodle poll and we can put them together. I thought that it would be pretty quick and easy to identify them. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's five people's calendars.
All right, all right. So I'm just going to say that we needed four days. Dr. Schiller and I, once those are identified, can put it together and hopefully we'll get moving on all of those important things.
My week's different every week, every day is different. So, but if we can, Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, I mean, just put them all out there and just see when we're all available.
And there's the opportunity to always add four hours to the beginning of the meetings, the days that we're already there. We can always start at 9:00 AM and that would give us two of the four.
I gotta tell you, it's a bit of a marathon. I feel like I'm not as, by the time more meetings starts, I'm like, I feel like my brain is already a bit fried. And so for me, I would prefer to.
So moving forward, what we'll do is put the doodle poll out. Then what we'll do is, is we'll go to the, we'll set the zeros, ones, twos on a four-hour session that we can come back. We will compare Neola to the other ones, that's taken care of. Now, the only thing that we have left is the vision, value and beliefs. And I think that if we take that and either just talk to it real quick and then bring it tonight, or we can bring it up tonight, that would be good.